Good morning, everyone. We're going to call a meeting of the Board of Supervisors and the redevelopment authority to order. Today is Thursday, April 18th, 2019. It is just after 8:30 a.m. We're in the community center at the Sierra Room at 8:51 East Williams Street in our very own Carson City. We're also streaming on the Internet, and I believe if you've got Charter or you've got cable, anyway, you're on 196 or something like that on the public access channel. Can we have a rule call for the record, please?
Supervisor Giammi?
Good morning, I'm here.
Supervisor Bonkowski?
Here.
Supervisor Bagwell?
Here.
Supervisor Barrett?
Here.
Mayor Kroll?
I'm here, too. Okay. Can we call on our good friend Pat Propster of the Calvary Chapel to get us started today? Morning, Pat.
Good morning.
What do you have for us today?
This morning, I have for us, there was a prophet named Anani in the Old Testament. He was warning King Asa that the Lord sees everything, and the words that he uses is says this, "In the eyes of the Lord run to and fro throughout the earth, that he might show himself strong on behalf of those whose heart is loyal to him." But he was warning Asa, and he said, "You have done foolish, and you're going to have problems." So I'm not saying that for us. I'm saying that, "Lord, this morning, we want your eyes to fall upon us, to stop on us, but we want to be faithful and loyal to you, Lord. We ask you this morning that you would lead us and you would guide us in the decisions that we would make. Lord, as this is Holy Week, and a lot of things have taken place in our media, in our news, in France, Lord, as we see Notre Dame being just destroyed by fire, Lord, your eyes move to and fro throughout the earth, and you see these things. Lord, I would ask you that we would always, as Carson City, even as the mayor so affectionately calls our little town, our city of hope and refuge, Lord, for those that are seeking solace, Lord, that your eyes would stop here and see the loyalty to you, not in iconic buildings, Lord, though we want to take care of them, but, Lord, the reason that the buildings were there in the first place. Notre Dame was put there as a place of truth, a place of worship, a place of stopping and seeking you, and this morning, we do that. And, Lord, we ask you to bless this day, bless this Holy Week, from the time of last Sunday being triumphant entry to the resurrection this upcoming Sunday. And, Lord, everything in between. Lead us and guide us in all of your ways.
Thank you, Pat. Always well done. Thank you. Can we call on our well-dressed police officer back there, Ken Sandage? Do you want to come up and...
(laughing)
I wasn't talking about you guys. Come on up and lead us in the pledge. I call him Mr. GQ.
(laughing)
Go ahead.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Thanks to both of you. Thanks, Pat. Thanks, Ken. All right. We're now on public comment, item number five. This is the time to comment and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of this body. We'll have, we have the Controller of the great state of Nevada, Catherine Byrne, wants to address this a little bit, tell us what's going on. So welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board of Supervisor. I'm very grateful to be here today, and I really appreciate the state of Nevada for electing me their state controller last November. As you know, I'm a professional accountant, so I think this is my wheelhouse. So I went from across the street to the Capitol to be the CFO for this state. So I'm very dedicated to the, you know, Carson City in Nevada, and also to my profession and provide that to the state.
Well, you could hang around with us all afternoon then, as we do our budget. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So I moved to Carson City in 2011. I had just come from California. I had walked away from my house for foreclosure. I was unemployed, and I was living in my trailer. Over the years had gone by, I was able to grow out of that situation, and that was here in Carson City when that all happened. In 2014, I was able to buy a house here in Carson City, and I sit here today as your Nevada State Controller through all that. It was here in Carson City that I went through all that. And again, I thank you very much. I brought today our new Capitol brochure, and I set them back on the last table over there, so you're going to get it. Let me grab one, show you. They look like this, and it's brand-new. So I say, well, it'll last four years. It'll last four years, so... But it has everything done, and we just finished it. Let's see. Again, I'd like to thank you, and the next four years, there's a lot of changes coming on in the government right now. I'm kind of laying back on the back burner here, trying to just look at everything that's going on, and pretty soon, I'll be able to talk with our governor, what I'd like to do for this state, move forward for good governance, transparency, and to, you know, dedicate my time here in Carson City to be the best, try to be the best CFO for this state as I can. Again, I thank you, Mayor Bob, and Board of Supervisors, and I hope I get to come back more often.
Well, you're welcome. You're welcome back anytime, and thanks for your service on behalf of our great state. And so your office is on the first floor of the Capitol, is that the word?
That's correct. Mayor, when you go into the Capitol, you pass Ms. Winamaka, and I am on the right side, and Zach Cohen, our treasurer, is on the left side. Upstairs is Lieutenant Governor Kate Marshall, and, you know, when you walk in the building, you go to the left, and you keep walking down the hall, and that's the governor's office, and he's behind doors and walls, and comes in a special door, too.
Yeah, but it's, you know, in Nevada, it's pretty nice that we don't have to walk through a metal detector to get in to the state Capitol.
That's right, and that's, thank you for bringing up another thing, that is such a wonderful thing in Nevada, is that we are very open to talk to the leaders in our community and our state, and we're very close-knit, we protect each other. We know in the end of the day, we're all in this together, and yes, it's such a good feeling that we are that personal and that trusting, that we don't have to have the, you know, all the metal detectors and someone with a wand waving at us, and, you know, you walk in the door, it's very intimidating. So yes, that's in Nevada.
Thanks, Catherine.
Thank you.
Madam Controller, thank you very much. All right.
You bet. Have a nice day.
Have a good day. And, but you are welcome to come back in the afternoon.[527.29][527.29](laughing) I didn't hear a yes on that one.
Don't blame her.
Okay.
(inaudible)
All right. Any other public comment? Yes, sir, come on up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Hi.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning. First of all, Sheriff's Department is an amazing group of men and women, so thank you, Ken. My name is Lee Elliott, I live at 277 South Iris Street. Oh, do I have to? (laughing) I do that for a living. My name is Lee Elliott, I live at 277 South Iris Street. My wife and I had just commuted back from Maui after living there for four years, and we'd lived here for over 11 years prior to that. When I got back, I was driving downtown, not the old downtown that I was used to before I moved to Maui, and just recently, I just found out that 395 from Fifth Street all the way down to 580 is going to be tore down and downsized to two lanes, if I read that article correctly.
Each way, two lanes.
Which way?
Each way, four lanes, two lanes each way.
Okay. That's fine. And you're going to put a roundabout there at Stewart Street, okay? My question to you is that the amount of money that's going to be spent to do that, which is close to, what, $20 million, $17 million, $18 million, it depends who you talk to, driving around Carson City, I see streets that you could actually fall into that need to be repaired, and I'm wondering why that money, the $20 million or so, is being allocated to do that and not repair the streets that we already have? There are some major, major, major problems with the streets. Driving down Fifth Street, I live up, like I said, up on Iris. I felt my car shake, rattle, and roll just going down Fifth Street because of the potholes and because of what the streets are made of, and I think personally, it's a waste of money at this time to get that done. And yes, you know, thank you for thinking about the bicycles, and that's important, the lives, but I really think you guys need to reevaluate your priorities and get the streets fixed here in this city, because there are some major, major potholes all over the city.
You will get an argument out of any of us in this room, and I don't think anybody in the town about, as a city, about potholes. I mean, because it's been a pretty brutal winter as well, but on the funding side, they're kind of two different pots of money, and let me try to explain, and we've got the RTC folks here as well. The South Carson Street Project is part, is part of what's called a plan of expenditure, when we raised an eighth of a percent sales tax that we use to finance downtown, the downtown urban core, streetscape, complete streetscape, and Curry Street, and we have some for South Carson that was also in that plan of expenditure. That's what we decided, that's how we could spend that money. Now, we've made some changes tinkering to that, so if there's any excess outside of that plan of expenditure that we're getting from sales tax that we can put into normal road maintenance, but as a matter of how that eighth of a percent was supposed to be spent, there is an actual plan of expenditure, and we have to comply with that. And the second side of that is that when South Carson Street was turned over to us from the state of Nevada, because it used to be a state highway, now it is, now it's owned by us, they also gave us just north of $5 million in order to do a complete street project, which is part of why they, part of their agreement to turn over that street to us. So that's, that's part of it. We also have another seven and a half million dollars that came from the federal government for that complete street project. That's called a Tiger Grant, and we have additional monies that we have coming from the eighth of a percent sales tax, and we have some water and sewer funds, because we'll be talking about water and sewer. We're 60% complete with the analysis on, design analysis on South Carson Street. We anticipate getting that completed by the end of this year, or not by the end, yeah, shorter than that, but that's where the money's coming from. So while, you know, we've tried to winkle out a little bit of money out of that plan of expenditure by saying, you know, we're going to use whatever we can to help our streets, that, you know, the primary thrust of that sales tax increase was to finance the public infrastructure projects that are going on around. So that's how it came. They're, they're kind of different pots. I just can't take that money that's raised by that eighth of a percent and then go out and do other things with it, other than what we said we were going to do to it. Now, on the road maintenance, I'll let the RTC folks take that. You want to do that, Brad?
Yeah, and this is, I think, a discussion that we can have offline. As the Chair of the RTC, I'd be happy to sit down with you and go answer any of your questions.
That would be great, because I have a lot of friends. You know, I'm the head of AMAC Chapter here in northern Nevada, and I know that a lot of conservative seniors don't have the funds to go out and fix their cars when they go into a hole. And so I think it's a, to me, to me personally, it's a serious, a serious problem here in this state, and especially in Carson City, and we just need to be able to be aware that things are going to get done.
There, there's a, you know, if you know, if you know of a severe pothole that we're not tending to, you know, take a picture of it, let us know. If you're on Carson Connect, you can let us know about it. Otherwise, I think our folks are out trying to look at all the potholes and do what we can to fix those right now, so... But if you know of another one, use Carson City Connect, or actually call the RTC and let them know, hey, there's, there's a huge pothole, and I know we did that at least a couple of times when the storm was hitting, there was some real bad ones out on, I can't remember the street, but, you know, we got right on that, because that was a danger. We're aware of that, so Brad, I don't know if you want to...
Lee, if you'll leave your contact information with the city manager, I'll contact you to set up a meeting. I would like to say, too, though, that there was an opportunity for the citizens of Carson City to raise some revenue to help repair the roads a couple of years back, three years ago, and it got voted down. So the citizens of Carson City are going to take some responsibility, too, for our lack of road maintenance, and that's some of the information that I'll share with you when we sit down. You know, what we have is about an 80% deficit in needed revenue to be able to properly maintain our roads. It's a number that we can't even begin to overcome, so we are always looking for alternative methods and ways to stretch our dollars.
All right. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Leo. All right. All right. Other public comment? Anybody? Do I see anybody back there? All right, we take public comment is usually for each of the agenda items that we're going through today, and I think probably have public comment on all of those. So, and we also have public comment at the end of the meeting, and we'll have public comment when we start redevelopment, and there's a lot of opportunities for public comment. Can we now take up item number six? This is the approval of minutes. We have two minutes here, two sets of minutes, January 24th, 2019, and March 21st, 2019. On the January 24th, 2019 minutes, let me read a statement that our district attorney has prepared for me, and that prepared for us. "State law requires the adoption of public meeting minutes within a certain timeframe. The adoption of the January 24th, 2019 minutes is outside that timeframe due to staffing on those levels, and so for good cause showing, they're being adopted today." So that's why we're picking up January 24th. I think the law requires us to have these done within 30 days. That's my understanding of it. Forty-five days, pretty short timeframe, but so that's where we are. So everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? Motion's in order.
There are no objections. I'll make a motion for both sets of meetings.
Both is fine.
I move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Board of Supervisors for January 24th, 2019, and for March 21st, 2019, as presented.
Let's see here, I've got to fire up my machine here. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye or voting nay. Pose nay, carried. Okay. Let's take up the agenda, the potential adoption of the agenda. Any changes, madam? City, county manager, city manager, manager, CFO, whatever you are. Accountant, whatever.
We're going to pull item 12A for the sheriff off of the consent, and then...
We'll put that on the general agenda.
On the general agenda. And then item 22B, we're going to pull that off the agenda altogether. That was Assembly Bill 436, and that, that bill died last Friday, so...
Not to be resurrected?
Not, not to be, yeah, resurrected.
Okay. All right, all right. Okay, so we're going to pull item 22 Alpha, and we're going to, 22 Bravo, excuse me, wrote that down wrong, and we're going to take item 11...
12A.
12A. We're going to take 12A, and we'll take that up right when we start, after the end of the consent agenda, and we go on to the regular agenda, so we'll move 12A to there. All right. Any other, any members of the public want anything pulled from the consent agenda for individual discussion? Seeing none, any member of the board, if we want some changes on the agenda? Anybody? Brad, still looking?
Yeah.
Want a minute? Take a minute. Take a minute.
I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah.
All right. We'll entertain a motion, no, not, we'll just, unless, without an objection, we will adopt the agenda as published with the exception of item 22 Bravo, which will be pulled, and item 12A, which will be moved from the consent agenda to the general agenda. All right. Let's now go to, leave the dais up here and go on the floor. Let's do lengthless service for our employees here.
Good morning.
Good morning. Sorry. Do you want the hot mess?
The first one we have this morning is a certificate in recognition and appreciation for 20 years of continuous service and dedication to Carson City. This goes to Rob Amundson. Rob, where are you? Come on up. Yeah. You look like you weathered it pretty good after 20 years.
Yeah, not too bad.
Not too bad. Well, you know, Rob is a street technician three, and, you know, you see him wearing the vest here. We want to make sure that, you know, when you see folks wearing these vests, they're out there doing what they can to make sure our community is a better place to live, and so, you know, be careful that you don't hit them or do some things like that, and also be understanding about, you know, they have to work in some difficult environments, usually every day. So, Rob, on behalf of a grateful community, please accept our thanks and congratulations for 20 years of service, and we look forward to, when you're here, it gets a little grayer, we'll let you out maybe, but we'll look forward to another 20 years.
Thank you, sir.
All right, you want to... All right, come on up here. This is for another for 20 years. Earl! I love that shirt, man. That's all right. Earl, everybody knows, do I call Earl, maybe it's the third, or just Earl? What do you call? What do you want? Earl's fine.[1328.15][1328.15](laughing) For 20 years, you've helped make Carson City a better place to live under, you know, under difficult circumstances sometimes, and circumstances that you don't really always, you know, know what's going to happen when you go out on a call. But Carson City is a better place to live because of our employees, you know, like you, who've been dedicated for all this long time. We have a wonderful law enforcement organization here in Carson. A large part of that is to you folks who have been here such a long time, and particularly you, Earl, for doing what you've done for all these, all these years, and so we look forward to 20 more years. And I don't know if you're growing, you know, I don't know if you've got gray hair under there or not, but, you know, anyway, we deeply appreciate your service, and come on up here. Take that. Okay. All right. All right. Now, we're going to do kind of a special one here. This is National Dispatch Week. National Dispatch Week. Sheriff, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Yeah, this is National Telecommunications Operators Week, and I've got Darren Schultz here with Public Works, Director of Public Works, Sean Slaman, the Fire Chief, and of course, I'm Kenny Furlong, the Sheriff. This is Karen Maraczek. Karen Maraczek is the dispatch manager for our facility here in town, and we're honored to honor them, not just here, but all the way across the country, but these are our, this is our town, and our dispatchers play such a central role in everything that happens here in this town, whether it becomes a pothole for Public Works, disasters that we have, and Sean and I were talking about that yesterday, God help us, Public Works seems to have the bulk of the disasters, the floodings, and so on and so forth, and dispatchers play such a huge, huge piece in it. So when you see the officers, or you feel like I do, the officers getting out of the car, and they appear to be alone, they're not alone, because we have great, great dispatchers that are connected to them in the cars and on their hips. So thank you, Karen, very, very much.
So I'd also like to echo Sheriff Furlong's comments and just add a few points. Our dispatchers work very long shifts. They answer phones on a daily basis, and every single one of those phone calls, somebody needs help, and in their mind, and some of them rise to major and true emergencies, and other times, they just need to talk. And our dispatchers, on a daily basis, professionally and happily, take care of those calls, and they dispatch the right resources, and oftentimes, they are the first steps, every time, they are the first step in making that day get a little bit better, and oftentimes, they are able to provide instructions to those who call in to give assistance so that we can start medical aid or protection from a crime, and to get them into a safe place so that when first responders, law enforcement, fire, Public Works arrive, that those people can be safe. So Karen, thank you. Ditto to what's been said. The calm voice on the phone, the calm voice on the radio, we love our dispatchers. Thank you.
You know, we are truly blessed in this community to have the level of dispatch, quality dispatchers we have, because, you know, ditto to everything everybody else has said, but when you're on the end of a phone call, when somebody's having a difficulty in life, one way or the other, it takes a special person with special training in order to not make the situation worse, but to defuse things and to help people get along, and so on behalf of us, Karen, and all your troops out there, thank you for everything you do, and we'll all be celebrating that this week and as the weeks go forward. So, okay. All right. Thanks, Sheriff. All right. Melanie, you want to...
I'm going to get my picture and do it.
Oh, yeah, let's do it. We're going to do that now. Karen, come on up here. We're going to do them all here. So come on up, and just hang on, we're going to do Employee of the Quarter. All right, you want to...
So this Employee of the Quarter Award goes to someone who is very special, who helped me out in an emergency situation. The city was in the middle of an audit, and we found out that our personnel records that were in storage were being rained on and frozen together, and when we notified this individual, because the auditor continued to ask us for the personnel file, he not only found the file for us, but removed every single one of the personnel files that was in storage, researched the best way to dry every single piece of paper out in those personnel files, dried all of the files, resorted them back into boxes, packed them back into the warehouse, and secured the warehouse to make sure that it would never happen again. So I'd like to call up Tom Gordon, because as the Warehouse Supply Coordinator for Carson City, this was above and beyond his job duties, and he worked over the weekend to make sure that this all got done and into the night hours. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're not going to give that to you just yet, because we've got to read some things first. All right. And if anybody wants to see, you know, what Melanie was talking about, she got some photographs of, you know, some of the water damages, and some of the documents received, and I, you know, I've had personal experience, because I was in an office where a lot of, when a flood came in 2007, or I think it was there, a lot of documents got wet, and we ended up ironing them for days, ironing them to get them all back together. So, you know, Tom, it's not an easy job to do it, but it's one that you really have to do if you're going to preserve the record. So let me read this before we give you your money. "This is a proclamation of the Board of Supervisors recognizing Thomas Gordon, Warehouse Supply Coordinator, as the Employee of the Quarter. It reads as follows: Whereas Carson City's quality of life attracts talented and loyal employees, and whereas every day Carson City employees put to use their broad array of skills and expertise with efficiency and integrity for the benefit of everyone in our city, and whereas Carson City values its employees and acknowledges that recognizing employees for their hard work and dedication is critical to the future health and growth of our city, and whereas we owe a substantial debt of gratitude to the Carson City employees and applaud those who go above and beyond in their loyalty and ability. Whereas Thomas Gordon, Warehouse Supply Coordinator, when notified that old paper personnel files located in a leaky storage unit were being damaged by continuous rainfall, immediately removed the files, researched the best way to save the files from the water damage, which required drying each individual piece of paper in the files, repackaged the files and returned them to storage in a manner in which the files would not be damaged further, thus avoiding a possible violation of state law, which requires the maintenance of personnel files and thereby contributing to the fulfillment of the city's mission, values, and vision. And whereas it is an honor to be selected for this award..." And whereas it is an honor to be selected for this award by your coworkers, and it speaks highly of your work performance and how it is perceived by others. Now, therefore, I, Robert Crowe, Mayor of Carson City, on behalf of all of us in our community and our Board of Supervisors, celebrate this special trust and confidence and loyalty, integrity, and ability of Tom, Thomas Gordon, and do hereby proclaim Thomas Gordon to be Employee of the Quarter for Carson City and encourage everyone to join us in this special recognition signed by all of us here by the mayor. Tom, thank you very much for all you've done. It's really hard to do what you guys did, and it takes a lot of time. It takes a lot of effort because it's painstaking work. So, on behalf, on behalf of all of us, let us give you this proclamation. And Melanie, we have a little something to give you. $200? Yeah. All right.
And then if we have any friends or family or coworkers who would like to get in the picture, we would appreciate it. Join us.
Anybody want to get in? Come on, you can't be all shy.
Oh, yes, they can.
They can be. All right, here we go.
Did you get it?
Got it?
Okay.
Okay.
Got it.
Thanks. Somebody's got the real check, too.
We want the white, we want the white check.
My wife probably already has it.
Probably already spent it.
We're trying not to trip on each other, right?
Doesn't mean it works. We try.
Okay, we're ready? All right, we'll now take up the consent agenda. Any, we've already pulled one. Any member, we want to pull anything else? Anybody in the public want anything pulled? Second ask. Okay, I don't see any, so we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 12A, which we'll take up as soon as we start the regular agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda consisting of 9A, 10A, 11A, and 13A.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, let me see. Posed nay, carried. Okay. All right, let's now, yeah, go shoot, shoot.
I just wanted to put on the record, we often on the consent agenda have our bill pay section, and I just wanted the public to realize, we do actually look at it just because we're taking it by consent. And I know Sherri in the back, our CFO, will let you know that I pull six random checks every single time and look at it. And I think it's important that the public knows we don't take it for granted and that we actually look at it. So, I just wanted to put that on the record.
And I think the law requires us to disclose that monthly.
Yep.
Okay. Let's take up item 12 Alpha. Who's going to do this? This is for discussion and possible action regarding a request from the Sheriff's Office for the submission of a grant application to the Department of Justice, 2019 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice. Okay, what's going on with this one?
For the record, Sheriff Furlong, this is a position that we've long had, grant-funded through a partnership with, oh, help me out here, Advocists to End Domestic Violence. That, that, that opportunity, we would like to switch over to the Sheriff's Office role, which would necessitate us submitting the grant for ourselves. It, on the surface, would create a position for the Sheriff's Office, but that position would be fully grant-funded. I do not anticipate coming back to the Board and asking for additional funds. We believe that we can offset everything that is required in the grant matching type funds. This is a victim's advocate position. It is much broader than the victim's advocate slot that the District Attorney's Office handles. Obviously, they deal with the criminal prosecutions of cases, but we have many victims here in this community that, for one reason or another, you might want to say they fall through the cracks. They're the victims of an incident, and there is no suspect that's apprehended or taken into custody that's going to go through the system. And yet, they are still victims of these crimes. And our victim's advocate, who primarily targets low-level domestic violence issues, is considered to be a tremendous asset to the Department and to the community.
Question to the Sheriff?
I'll go first, it doesn't matter. Good morning.
Morning.
Well, looking at the grant documentation on page 140 of our packets, or page 19 of the grant package, it has a section that deals with the sustainability of the project itself and the funding. And I thought I just heard you indicate that you did not anticipate coming back here.
I don't anticipate coming back to you. That's not to say that it would not, could not happen. I don't anticipate coming back to you for additional funds.
Your belief is this grant will be a continuous grant?
That's my hope. With our state and federal partners, victim advocacy is a huge priority.
One of the things that I'd ask staff to do because we're getting more and more positions that are grant-funded, we have it certainly in our Health Department, Nikki can attest to that, but based on all of our contracts and everything else, that the bumping rights, and when the grant goes away, the position goes away. And so, I really need that on the record for individuals to understand, these are grant-funded positions. And so, maybe I, I just need that on the record that we're not going to continue to fund it potentially.
I appreciate your comment. I think sometimes we take for granted certain things in life, like 911 operator. Grant-funded positions are that, grant-funded positions. And if those grant funds go away, then that position goes away.
Lori covered my concerns.
Any other board questions? John, Superior's Barrett, sorry.
Thank you. I think the whole group of us had the same concern, and I would encourage not only your department, but every department head, when something like this comes before us, that they just research it ahead of time and say, in the packet, either in the background material or even in the agenda, "We don't anticipate" is a good terminology so that we know, then we won't have to pull it off, as in this instance. It just makes sense. As a person who came out of the transparency realm that everybody curses, the news media, I like to see these things upfront rather than have to go through this. And it would speed the meetings as well. So, thanks for that.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions to the Sheriff? Other comment on this issue? Anybody?
I actually have.
I think Marcy's Law is going to require you to have something like this, too. So, anyway, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
All right. All right, let's now have a motion on that. Superior's Bagwell.
I move to authorize the Sheriff's Office to submit the grant application as described.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Posed nay, carried. Okay. Let's now take up item 15. This is for discussion-only presentation of discussion regarding the Western Nevada Development District. The acronym is, or the initials are WNDD, including an overview of WNDD and its mission and future activities. Who's going to do this?
Good morning. My name is Cheryl Gonzalez. I'm with Western Nevada Development District. Good morning to you, Mayor and Board of Supervisors. Thank you so much for this opportunity to provide you an overview of Western Nevada Development District. And I'm happy to say that the district has been around since 1983, and one of the original founders was Carson City. So, it's nice to point that out to you all. Western, at the beginning, I want to tell you the difference between Western Nevada Development District and Economic Development Authorities. Western Nevada Development District is a regional organization that provides regional planning and opportunities for grant-writing, management, administration, and planning services to prepare a community for economic development. We do not recruit, retain, or expand business, but we create an environment within which business can be recruited. So, our emphasis on infrastructure and workforce development, training towards that, towards that effort. So, a lot of times, people get us confused with EDON, NDA, or other economic development authorities. So, I like to say that right off the bat. Okay. So, I'm just going to go through a few slides here. Again, we were established in 1983 as the only Nevada-certified Economic Development Administration Development District. There are over 500 development districts throughout the United States. We are primarily funded through the federal government, through the Department of Commerce. The EDAs, again, are funded primarily through the state. And we also receive revenues from our membership organizations, of which Carson City is one of them. The original founders in 1983 were Carson City, Douglas County, Lyon, and Story Counties. And we're a multi-jurisdictional entity comprised of nine counties and five cities. We also have actually five associate members. And associate members are primarily businesses that participate on the Board. Again, our funding is provided through an annual EDA Economic Development Administration Planning Grant and Membership Dues. And our Boards, our Board is comprised of elected and appointed officials. Each one of our member organizations appoints an elected official, a staff member usually, and a business representative. We complete regional planning towards the development of Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. So, the SEDs, for those that, Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, is a regional planning document that brings all of those counties, all of those cities, businesses together to plan for economic vitality for the region. And that document is an important document in that it is a document that our organizations, our member organizations can tee up for funding, primarily federal funding. We also use it, like up in northeast Nevada, they're getting ready to develop a district up there. And that district will use that document not only for teeing up for federal funding, but they'll also use it with their mines so that the mines often get requested to give funds. They can point to this document that justifies the need for the funds and how everybody is in agreement on what those funds are going to be used for. So, we primarily go towards Economic Development Administration funding, but we also go towards other funding. For example, we just went through a Brownfields Coalition Assessment Grant with Love Lock, Pershing County, and our organization, and that's through EPA. So, we're not primarily just focused on EDA, although that is one of our priority areas. Again, the SEDs provides our member organizations the opportunity to be eligible to receive funding. USDA rule development points to our SEDs primarily in their funding, too. They look for their applicants to have been cited in the SEDs or their project falls under one of the goals of the SEDs. The services that we provide include the SEDs. The SEDs, we update annually, and in the SEDs, we update annually primarily with the goals and the projects. We are now getting in the process of rewriting it, which is a five-year rewrite. And we have a SEDs committee that represents all of the region through the Board. And that document, for the first time, is going to include a resiliency component, which is now being required by the federal government in planning efforts. And when I say resiliency, I mean that if, for example, there was a fire and it burned down Carson City, similar to what Paradise, what has happened to Paradise, what kind of strategies and goals does the member agency and/or the region have in place to respond to that as it relates to economic vitality? How are you going to get back on your feet again in response to that sort of situation? Another example is, say if Tesla or Panasonic shuts down, what do you have in place to respond to that to retain your economic vitality? So, this is the first time that we will be including that with our document and our planning. The planning efforts will go on for about a year to 18 months, and then we will submit that, and it will have this resiliency component. The other thing that we're going to do differently that we haven't done before is we're going to identify regional projects, or projects that might be community-based, but they benefit the entire region. So, we'll have projects by community member organizations, but now we're going to have priority projects that perhaps is going to benefit the entire region, which that's never been done before. The other, only other thing I want to mention on the SEDs is that we will have a SED stewarding committee. In the past, the SEDs has been written, and it was up to the member organization to apply for funding or approach WNDD saying, "We want to apply for this funding. Please assist us." Now, we're going to have a stewardship committee that will have ongoing interaction with our member organizations to see how they are moving forward on the different goals and all the different projects that have been identified so that we can keep that in the forefront of our planning efforts and make sure it doesn't sit on the shelf. Again, we do grant research, application, and administrative assistance. We do community studies and assessments. We just got through doing a Pershing County Economic Development Strategic Plan that was about a 12, I mean, not 12, an 18-month effort. And from that, we are now doing annual work plans for them that will translate into the budget to make sure that that document is engaged. Community planning, we were just approached by Story County yesterday to do a strategic plan for their community. And we also do marketing and training. For the last four years, Western Nevada Development District initiated and implemented the statewide Economic Development Conference. That conference is now standing on its own through the efforts and support, financial support of WNDD and agencies, businesses throughout the state, and it's being managed by an Economic Development Association that was established through WNDD. And so, now they're going to manage it, and it has been spun off now. By the way, that conference will be August in Henderson, Nevada. And we also have a revolving loan fund program that has been funded through USDA and CDBG. And that, that fund provides funding to businesses primarily in the rural communities. Some of our past accomplishments include these projects everywhere from Fernley wastewater treatment facility expansion to a trail system in Lyon County, Pershing County Industrial Park. WNDD has worked with EDA to fund several industrial parks throughout our region. We did the Stronger Economies Together Blueprint, which was the basis upon which the SEDs was written five years ago. And then we had the next level small business training that we worked with, with SBA, and trained several business prospects, owners, and existing owners to establish a business or expand their business. Carson City Projects have included the Lake Tahoe Prosperity Plan, which is now, we have established the Lake Tahoe Prosperity Center. And that was spearheaded by Carson City, Douglas County, Washoe County, Eldorado, and Placer. The importance of that project was, it was a planning project that brought together more counties and cities than any other planning effort in the state's history. And as a result of that planning effort, it brought together the whole Lake Tahoe basin, the cities and those counties to establish their own prosperity center. I don't know if you all have gone to anything with the Lake Tahoe Prosperity Center, but they're doing some amazing things up in that community and are trying to address right now the housing, affordable housing issue. The Carson City Airport Industrial Park Infrastructure was funded through EDA, an economic feasibility study for reconstruction of the VNT Railroad. And that was spearheaded again with Carson City, Douglas, Lyon, and Story Counties. And then flood mapping for disaster mitigation after the January 1997 floods. And I was asked- And that was spearheaded by Carson City, Douglas County, Washoe County, Eldorado, and Placer. The importance of that project was, it was a planning project that brought together more counties and cities than any other planning effort in the state's history. And as a result of that planning effort, it brought together the whole Lake Tahoe basin, the cities and those counties to establish their own prosperity center. I don't know if you all have gone to anything with the Lake Tahoe Prosperity Center, but they're doing some amazing things up in that community and are trying to address right now the housing, affordable housing issue. The Carson City Airport Industrial Park Infrastructure was funded through EDA, an economic feasibility study for reconstruction of the VNT Railroad. And that was spearheaded again with Carson City, Douglas, Lyon, and Story Counties. And then flood mapping for disaster mitigation after the January 1997 floods. And I was asked recently why there aren't some other projects that are more current up there, is because we haven't been approached with a project to pursue for you all. So one of my priorities is to meet with every single one of our member agencies to make sure that we've got that SEDs document in front of us, we're looking at the projects, and we're looking at opportunities to begin, you know, applying for grants. Our current projects right now, I apologize for the small font on this, like I said, with the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, we are rewriting that plan. We have to do it every five years. And our SEDs committee is represented throughout the region, a lot of business owners. And then our SEDs projects that we're working on right now, and these are very active application processes that we're going through. I don't know if you all are aware of JOIN, which is a workforce development organization. They're one of our associate members. We're working with them, and they're representing Carson City School District, Washoe County School District, and Douglas County School District to establish a work-based learning project. And we're working very closely with them to tee them up for EDA funding. And they're looking for, I think, about $1 million. I'm hoping that our application will be about $600,000, so we'll let you know how that goes. Washoe County and Reno are co-applicants to apply for disaster funding that has been provided through EDA. The disaster funding will help them, if they are successful in getting the application approved, with the Reno-Lemon Valley-Swan Lake flooding issue, which I'm sure you're all very aware of. And we're actively pursuing grant funds for that particular project. Again, it comes from the disaster funding program through EDA. That program is provided for those areas that were deemed disasters through FEMA in 2017. So that's one of the major criteria that is required in order to pursue that. With Fernley, we're looking for some funding for their community center, upgrades to their city water delivery system, Main Street revitalization. And Story County has asked us to begin looking at a downtown corridor transportation assessment. And their hope is to move traffic one way going north on C Street, but before they can even get to that point, I mean, that's the ultimate goal, but they're looking at infrastructure assessment. What are they going to need to do to redo all of that? They'll need to get the highway handed over to them from NDOT, similar to what you all did. And then they want to get all of the infrastructure redone in order that that road can be done in a one-way traffic flow. And then they would have it, you know, circle out in different directions from there. That's at the, all of these at the, with Fernley and Virginia City, Story County, are just now being, you know, looked at in a, with a deep dive to see how we can get some funding for that. What we've done recently, I just told you, Pershing County, we completed their Economic Development Strategic Plan and an annual work plan, and we just completed their Brownfields Coalition Assessment Grant. We applied for $600,000, and we hope to hear, you know, early summer whether or not we were successful with that grant.
Who actually files the grant?
Excuse me?
Whose name is on the grant application?
It depends. It varies. So it can be W-N-D-D. In the example of the Brownfields Coalition Grant, it's Pershing County, Love Lock, and W-N-D-D. We've worked with, although Wells is not a member organization of W-N-D-D, they applied for disaster funding. Their name is on the application, but we assisted them and supported them through that effort at the request of our EDR, Economic Development Representative, to support that efforts. And it looks like that project is going to get funded. It has to do with a disaster flooding and underneath their, underneath their freeway, where some of their hotels are located and restaurants. It looks like they're going to get that funding, and it'll be about an 80/20 match. It was supposed to be 50/50, but at the recommendation of our EDR, it looks like it'll be 80/20. And sometimes it's just, it's several entities, and sometimes it's just W-N-D-D. It just depends. If the agency wants W-N-D-D to manage the grant and administer it, then, you know, the applicant becomes W-N-D-D.
Okay, thank you.
I've talked to you about the SEDs. I won't go into that too much, except that it is required by EDA for the district to exist. And I will tell you, we're the only district in the state of Nevada. It does look like they're trying to tee up a couple of more districts in the state, Northeast Nevada and Southern Nevada. It's an important program to maintain because it is a regional plan, and again, it strengthens your position for federal funding. And the regional plan, all the partnerships and all the benefits that are associated with being a part of a regional plan are numerous. So, I mean, they can go as small as Story County helping Fernley put great big boulders in front of the Burning Man Art. By the way, that's another project we're working on, but I can't speak to it too much. But they're putting, they put boulders in front of the Burning Man Art. I don't know if you've seen it. It's almost in downtown Fernley. Story County came down with their, you know, their equipment and moved those boulders, and it was because of discussions at W-N-D-D. And it goes as far as the next-level training where several entities got together and helped with that, and the Stronger Economies Together. The SWAT, or the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Rewrite, it'll be kicked off with a regional workshop, June 10th, which is a Monday, at the City of Fallon Convention Center. It is being sponsored by the City of Fallon as well as W-N-D-D. We're going to have six focus groups that'll be representative of subject matter experts, everybody from, both the Senator's staff and Kate Marshall's staff will be a part of the SEDs. And subject matter experts from energy to logistics will be there. We have a focus group on infrastructure, workforce, business climate, business industry, quality of life, and transportation. That'll be an all-day workshop, and again, we have a SEDs committee that is spearheading this effort, and they're requesting, again, subject matter experts to be a part of each of those sectors of focus. For example, JoJo Myers from the Governor's Office of Science, Innovation, and Technology will be there representing the broadband effort for the state. This will be a really important, solid workshop where all of these industries get together under one roof, and they talk about what we're doing right now, where we need to go in the future. And then W-N-D-D with our board will begin to base the foundation of their SEDs document on the information that comes from there. We also have Bob Potts from the Governor's Office of Economic Development, Tom Harris from the University of Reno Center for Economic Development, and Buddy Borden from Cooperative Extension, as well as Marlene Reborya from Cooperative Extension, that will be giving presentations on the economic environment in the past, now, and in the future in terms of our region. It will be a very worthwhile workshop. I encourage you all and members of our audience to attend if you have the time. I've looked at some of the presentation materials, and it is very worthwhile to attend. And then again, our SEDs will be written out of this workshop. I know I've taken a lot of time. I thank you for your attention and willing to answer any questions you might have.
Got a couple up here. I think Supervisor Blakowski first, and then go from there.
Hi Cheryl.
Hi Brad.
So I agree with you that regional cooperation is very important. As I'm going through your presentation and kind of drilling down into it, I'm not clear that I'm seeing direct Carson City benefits. When I go through grant research, application, administrative assistance, I can't remember any grants or projects that have been funded that were Carson City-specific over the last several years. Same way with the revolving loan fund. I can't, I can't remember any businesses that have obtained any financing. Most of the past Carson City projects, as you mentioned, are pretty far back into the So what I'm really looking for is, I understand the regional benefit, and we have several regional projects that we could be working on with you that we don't appear to be working on you, such as regional water and sewer systems with Lyon County or Douglas, broadband, affordable housing, rail that could go from Lyon County into Carson for the industrial areas. These are all projects that seem to be applicable, none of which I'm aware of that we're working on with you. So where is the weak link, and where's the ball being dropped? Because we're not, we're not communicating with each other, and we need to fix that.
Well, yeah, and I appreciate that question very much. As I indicated before in my comments, that the SEDs was a document that everybody participated in and developing. Unfortunately, there was no, well, I've been with W-N-D-D for five years, and in those five years, I did not have any experience where we were approached for a project that funding might be requested and W-N-D-D's support to pursue. So I became the executive director in October, and my direction from my board, my executive board, was to begin reaching out, working with our member agencies, and rather than waiting for them to come forward and say, "These are projects we would like to work on," I've been requested to meet with my member agencies and begin to identify those projects. And once those projects have been identified, then I begin to work with our EDA representative to pursue funding. First of all, to see if they're eligible for funding, and then begin to pursue that funding. So part of the issue is that the SEDs report has not been pursued in the manner that it should be pursued, quite frankly. And so now my effort is to be more intricately involved with all of my member agencies and work with them with this Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy and make sure that we can begin to pursue funding for that and get those projects in place. The other effort that I think is really important is to begin to interface and identify projects that can be partnered on. That comes as a result of working with my member agencies more. As it relates to the funding, most of the funding was for rural communities, and Carson City wasn't eligible always for those rural community grants. And also, the businesses were made aware of those grants, or not those grants, those are the revolving loan fund program. And we only responded to applicants that made application. So that's part of the reason, too, for the revolving loan fund.
Well, I look forward to your new program.
Yes, I do, too.
Looking to working with you, and I think you can start with those four items that I mentioned.
Absolutely.
Look at the applicability of those.
Right, and your manager has already submitted three projects. I've asked each agency to prioritize three projects. You know, some of the agencies have, you know, 20 or 30 projects listed, and so I've asked them to prioritize, you know, those projects that they would like to have funding pursued. One of the criteria is that priority projects are those that can be aligned with businesses established and jobs created. So for example, with the Swan Lake Project, that disaster funding project, the city of Reno and Washoe County can identify square feet of commercial businesses that can be established if that project is awarded. So it's like 20 million square feet of business, commercial business, that can be established and permitted, permitted and then established out there. And thousands of jobs that are tied to getting this mitigation planning in place and the project funded. So if, when, if and when it can be tied to jobs and businesses, and we're not recruiting the businesses, but we're setting up the environment within which they can be recruited.
I would think that rail, if there was a way to get rail here to Carson from central Lyon County, that that would be an applicable study, because I can tell you that the requests that we get, probably 25% of them require rail, and so they don't even look here, when we could handle all of their other requirements very easily, and in fact, it would be less expensive for them to locate in Carson City and create those jobs. So that's a project that I would love to see some additional work done on.
Absolutely. Thank you for that.
John, I think, go ahead.
Supervisor Barrett. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am the representative to your board from this Board of Supervisors. And when it was handed off to me, I was told I could just, you know, call in for the meetings, et cetera, et cetera. I haven't done that. I've come to most of the meetings, although I've missed one here in the first part of this year, but I've been on for two, and I'll be on for two more. So I know how you work, and I know you have just been handed the ball as the director, and so I want to compliment you on this presentation. It's very, very good. Covered a lot of things. First of all, you did also cover the lack of currency, when Brad's the question, of matters in which the city and you are working together. And I join him in hoping to look forward to some things. It seemed to me, though, when you made your remarks, you threw the ball back at us and said, "It's us who have to come to you." Is that always the way it works, or do you work with, say, some of the other entities, Reno, other members, by going to them? Or do they always present it to you first, or do you go to them with ideas?
Again, I can only speak to what I have been directed to do for the future. And in the five years that I was the project manager for W-N-D-D, I know that our president, Ed Lawson from the city of Sparks, which by the way, Ed couldn't be here today. He is taking additional responsibility with the mayor of Sparks being ill, so his calendar and schedule has gotten pretty eaten up with that, with that work, so he apologizes for not being here today. But at any rate, in the past, and I saw, I've seen this in other districts, too, they write the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy with their member agencies, and then it's like they wait for the member agency to come forward and initiate a process for a particular project. And that's not always the case. Sometimes it's a project that's so regionally driven that it's obvious that they need to move forward on this. But my direction from my board, my executive board, is to create close relationships with all of my member organizations, identify what they're working on, work with them and point out to them, "This is an opportunity for you to pursue some funding for." I'm not saying you're going to get the funding, but it's, it looks like a pretty good project. That's what happened with the JOIN project. That looks like a really good project that we should begin to pursue. And so in the future, and already I have begun, like I met with you and Nancy, and I forget the other lady's name, although I've worked with her in the past. Who was that?
Hope Sullivan of our planning department.
Right. To say to them, "Let's look at your projects in your, in this document, and what is really important to begin to pursue? What are the highest priority projects?" So that's, that's our efforts moving forward. And I think with the SEDs rewrite, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I think with the SEDs rewrite, I'm really excited about the possibilities of what this, what this can do for our region. I think it's important that we hear from the subject matter experts, we get to hear from them all under one roof, which was also one of the purposes of the conference. The conference brought people from all aspects of what creates economic vitality, under-one-roof networking. That doesn't happen anyplace else. We had Nevada Energy, Southwest Gas, Greater Nevada Credit Union, all the economic development professionals. We had them all under one roof, networking. And that's created a lot of strong opportunities in program and services where they can pick up the phone and talk to each other more often. That's the intent with the SEDs rewrite.
That answer leads me to my next question. Would you name, I think you said, five members? I know who they are, but the business members that you talked about, associate members for our board?
There is JOIN, JOIN Nevada, or Nevada, Echonet, Handsford Economic Consulting, Nevada Builders Alliance, Nevada Energy, and maybe it is five, maybe it's four, unless I'm forgetting one, but there's four. I'm sorry, there are four. I might be forgetting one.
Thank you. My next question concerns, well, I'll preface it by saying, I once got out of the news media business, well, now twice, because I'm doing this, but I once got business, well, now twice, because I'm doing this, but I once got out of the news business and was the president of the tax council in another state. I was that state's Carol Velardo for about 10 minutes, it was actually about two years, and I was basically a one-person lobbyist, let's be honest about it, in that kind of work. You're basically a one-person office, you're a little more, but it sounds to me, with the large membership, and my observation is, with your predecessor and now with you, that if your outreach works out for you, you're going to be rather inundated with things to do. Can you address that? Because balls might get dropped, at least when I was doing what I was doing, sometimes they did.
By the way, the other business was Sun Science, sorry.
So there are five.
So, yeah, that's a good question. We'll be talking about that as a result of the budget being proposed at the next board meeting.
Which is April 22nd, right?
Right, Monday. And it's just a tentative budget right now, it's not a proposed. I rely on our board members to help out quite a bit. So the SEDs rewrite, for example, we have over two dozen volunteers that are helping with that SEDs rewrite, plus I have Tom Harris and Marlene Raboya and Buddy Borden, who are helping me write that document. So I may, I may be the face of an office of one person, but I have several partners and my board members and volunteers that come forward. When we did the conference, that was a pretty huge project, and I was a one-person show then, and so we created a committee of people from all over the state, many of which I did not know, and they were so excited to come to the table and help, and raised $80,000 in sponsorships for that project, and got over 64 speakers. You know, you just, you just bring together the volunteers and the experts and create an exciting vision that benefits everybody, and everybody gets on board and makes it happen. That's, that's what will, that's what's happening with the SEDs. And of course, with every grant that we successfully acquire, we get administrative funds, and a part of that administrative funds will be contracts that manage that grant, so it won't just be me. So with the Brownfields Coalition Grant, we would get $30,000 administrative fund, plus I have positions built into that grant to help manage it and do the assessments. I'm not going to go out there and do the assessments of the sites. So you bring together contracts, volunteers, and mostly the contract staff. I have three contract staff I work with as well, the bookkeeper, Patty Romelli, she's been there 25 years. So she does the budgets and so on and so forth.
Thank you for that. And by the way, that was a good conference at the Atlantis, and we like it when it's up here. I'm not a big fan of going down to Vegas.
Right, oh, I thought it was a great conference. It was so fun.
In terms, I have frankly, as a member of this board, been vocal that in economic development, we should either go for it or, you know.
Right.
Not. Do you find that those jurisdictions that are members of W N D D do well if they have both an elected and a staff member? Ours has pretty much been just an elected member in the past. I think you have Lee Pimmel on your, on your list, but, for example, I don't, I don't think he showed up for the conference, I mean, he may have, I don't know. But at any rate, I know Lisa Granahan from down in Douglas County is very active. What's your assessment of how that works? Because, of course, we as board members are also stretched, as you are, if you have a lot on your plate, and it's good, but I'd like to get your assessment of how that works best.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you all for your service. You know, I've worked around elected officials for years, and I really, I don't know that a lot of people do appreciate the work that you all have to do, and you serve on several boards in addition to your Board of Supervisors position for which you were elected, and then the staff. I just really appreciate all the effort and work that you do in service of your community. So let me say that first of all. Second of all, to answer your question, my belief is, the bylaws have been set up so there's an elected official, a staff member, and a business person to serve on the board. When you have that combination, and you know, you want your business person to be representative and have, that understands your community, knows your community, and shares the vision of what you want to have happen for your community. And you want a staff person that is like a Lisa Granahan, she's their economic development person, and she works hard to engage economic development vitality, I think she's done a great job. So my personal recommendation, and which is what was the vision early on, was that there are elected staff and business person, because then you get, and to participate on the board, be engaged with the board. The SEDs is only as successful as the engagement of the member organizations, and the same goes with the engagement on the board and how it was originally intended. I don't know if that answers your question, but that's my recommendation.
Finally, something came out of your Vegas trip that filtered back to me about the opportunity zone, and I was told by a circuitous route that the SEDs participation helps put a city in good position if they have an opportunity zone, and we do have one in this community. Can you wax eloquent on that for about 30 seconds?
Oh, only 30?
Take a minute.
No, I'm sorry, you know what? I have to say, I'm very, I'm not knowledgeable as much as I'd like to on the opportunity zones, but I do know that, that if you have the SEDs and the opportunity zones, you do leverage your ability for funding. So I do know that. I apologize, I don't know more on that.
Okay.
I have to admit, greenside up still.
How so? Wouldn't be in your bailiwick yet.
Yeah, getting there.
Stacy.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll try and be quick.
Don't worry about it.
Just a comment to tag on to what Supervisor Bonkowski said, and I agree with those things, and I appreciate you making a presentation here, because a lot of times, we don't know, the collective lead don't know what we don't know.
Right.
And I think it's, it's important, and I don't know how you build this into your work plan, but it seems to me that outreach is, has got to be a really important part of what your charge has to be, because I know not only from the local government perspective are we probably not taking advantage of everything we could be, but I think that there are businesses in those communities, for instance, if you get the Brownfields grant for Persian County, how do those businesses find out about that? How do prospective buyers find out about that? And I know here in Carson that N N D A has Brent Field funds available, and there are very few people who, who know about that and know to access that. And I've been able to access it in my private capacity, but only because I have a very good friend who works as a consultant. So anyway, that's as much a comment as anything else, and I agree with Brad in terms of the projects that we could move forward on. So I guess it's just a statement, not really a question, but I assume that you kind of tried to build outreach in, or maybe in the future you can expand that outreach a little more.
Yeah, and I'd like to just respond in less than 30 seconds, if I can, I don't know. One of my goals, which is translated into the budget, is increased marketing and creating more awareness and understanding of what we are, what we do, and what we can provide, and how we benefit your communities. So that's one of my goals that will be presented to my board on Monday, and then that is translated into the budget.
Great, great, thank you.
So that would be addressed that way.
And then if I could, Mayor?
If we get the grant.
Yeah, I'd like to ask the city manager two questions. One, what is our annual membership fee? Do you know?
I think it's in the range of 5,000, oh, 6,000.
6,000 annually?
Yeah.
Okay. And can you share what projects you listed with her that, that you're interested in having them work on, potentially?
They were the corridor projects, the Highway 50 East, and the North Carson Street, and then also the fire station slash emergency operations center.
Okay. Okay, thank you, and thank you for presenting.
Oh, it's my pleasure. Thank you for taking the time.
Let me ask you one other last question here. I too agree with what Supervisor Bonkowski listed. Suppose, suppose I asked, would W N D D help in creating a regional homeless shelter?
I, there's no funding available in E D A for that. Reno has also requested pursuit of research on that. I haven't researched what programs or grants would be available, but the homeless shelter is not aligned with jobs or recruiting businesses. That doesn't mean I don't look at other grant opportunities. So Reno has also asked us to look into some, what funding might be available for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because my own sense is that the homeless issue is not, is not limited to one jurisdiction or another. It's a regional problem, and it seems to me like, you know, even though it may not be directly aligned with it, with economic development, it's a key piece of community infrastructure that, you know, where people, if people feel good about coming here to open a business, you know, they need to have, know that there are services available for those who are homeless or otherwise in transition. You know, so anyway, I just ask you to think about that, because it's not just Reno, it's not just Carson City, it's not just Lyon County, it's all of us, and I don't know what the state's going to be doing on that.
And it can be tied to affordable housing, too.
Well, I agree with that, and so I would tag that on to what Supervisor Bonkowski said, affordable housing slash homeless shelters or homeless issues.
I would like to encourage you all, if you can't attend, to send a representative, more, if possible, businesses, to attend our June 10th workshop, and bring up the rail issue, and bring up the homeless issue as a part of the discussion. So weakness, absolutely, and it's also an opportunity for the rail. So I know that NDOT will be there, we are looking at rail, so there's a great opportunity there.
All right. Other questions? Cheryl, anybody? No, I just want to thank Cheryl, because she did point out, honestly and above-board, that there are funds, federal funds, that aren't available. A good example is USDA rural office, which happens to be located here, isn't in our bailiwick because we're over 50,000. So this is the kind of thing that you get into the ins and outs of how that federal money comes down its path through. Thank you. Okay. Public, anybody, public comment? Anybody want to weigh in? I don't see anybody out there. Okay. Thank you very much, Cheryl, for your presentation.
Thank you so much. I really appreciated the time, and it's so good to see you all, and good to see Lori and John. Thank you.
All right. All right.
Do you want me to escape this? Okay.
Oh, that's got on airport, I got it on airport, I'm going to turn it off, yeah, sorry. Okay, let's take up item number 16, insurance. Melanie, who's going to do this?
Good morning, Mayor, members of the board. Melanie Bruketa, Human Resources Director. The action before you is to approve the contract between Hometown Health and Carson City for employee and retiree health insurance benefits, as well as to continue the funding under the high deductible plan in the amounts of 2,143 for the employee only, 3,269 for the employee plus spouse, 3,128 for the employee plus children, and 4,430 for the employee plus family. Today with me is LP Insurance, along with, which this was really nice, I wasn't expecting Hometown Health to be present, however, we have a representative from Hometown Health as well, if you have any questions.
Want to talk to us about the cost of insurance? Other than, I understand that's for the employees, but what, I mean, what's the overall impact on the city?
Hometown Health has agreed to give us a rate pass for this year.
And they don't anticipate giving a rate pass or making a rate increase the next year?
Well, they would not, as hard as I tried to negotiate that, the best I could do would be a 12% rate cap. We, I've never seen that in my time here, so we would have other options at the end of next year to look at other healthcare providers if we needed to.
Okay. Who do you want to go from here?
Um, I'd ask...
Why don't you take, take a shot and tell us about Hometown Health, you know, what your plans are, who you are, go ahead, and just give us a 30 or 90 second elevator speech about Hometown Health.
So Kevin Monahan, LP Insurance Services, actually, yeah, thank, good, thank you. So I'm not with Hometown Health, I can speak to them a little bit, or we could have Hometown Health come up and speak a little bit about their position.
Okay.
Good morning, thank you. It's not very often that people want to talk to me, so I'm grateful for the opportunity. My name is Lisa Schlamer-Galb, and I represent Hometown Health. I'm the account executive, and we work with consultants and brokers in the community, and work through, with employers as well, to kind of figure out what their needs are and help with the pricing, and see if we can put something together. So we've worked with LP Insurance to do that for your employees here in Carson City. We are actually the insurance component of Renown Health, so we're also in the community here and in Nevada. We're one of the regional, largest regional employers, and we value local, working with local companies and local governments. We do a lot of local government, and we also work a lot with LP. So we're really focused on investing in the community, and we're really excited about the prospect of having you as a new client.
Okay. If, when we shift from prominence to hometown, if that's where it goes today, anybody going to get dropped out? Any of our employees or retirees going to get dropped out of coverage for a particular medical provider that they use?
We don't anticipate that. A lot of work has been done to make sure that the transition is smooth, and there isn't any much abrasion at all.
Okay. Stacy, Supervisor, do you want to?
I want to comment on that, too, I'm sorry, if I may, just to, just to be clear. So there is one distinction that's important to note between Hometown Health and St. Mary's, and that's up in Reno. Renown now will be the available health system, whereas it used to be St. Mary's system. Down here in Carson, there'll be very little, if any, disruption, and that disruption would be perhaps an independent provider, but Carson Tahoe, Carson Medical Group, Carson Tahoe Medical Group are all going to remain options as they were under prominence. So, so up north, you may see with the change in, in, from St. Mary's to Renown, but I think that'll be welcome on a lot of fronts as well, because today people can't utilize renowned providers.
Okay. Supervisor, oh.
You asked my question.
Okay, all right. Any other board questions? Public want to weigh in as before we take a vote? Take a motion, anyway? I don't see anybody. All right, board, what do you want to do?
I move to approve the employee-retiree health insurance contract with Hometown Health and to continue to fund the health savings accounts for active employees in the annual amounts for fiscal year 2020 as proposed.
There's a motion and a second of the motion, discussion, hearing, and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried, thank you very much. Welcome to hometown.
And I would encourage each of you to come to one of the open enrollment meetings. They'll be held the week of May 8th, as well as the following week of May 13th. More information will be sent out via email.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Thanks to all your work, you guys. All right, let's see. Let's take up the public guardian, and then after that, we'll take a short break if we want.
Good morning. How are you?
Doing all right.
John with us, he has to step out for a moment.
Who's, I didn't hear that.
Can you turn that?
There you go.
There you go.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I had John Giomi, our deputy case manager here, present, but he had to step out for a call.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll be back in a moment. I would like to...
Waiting for you at the table, John, so come on up here.
Up, here he is.
Good morning. Thank you very much for the Board of Supervisors for allowing us to be present today for our report. I'd like to introduce John Giomi, who is our deputy case manager, and Claudette Springmeyer, who is also currently working in our office. The most heartwarming aspect I wanted to report about our office is the public office is the extremely wonderful relationship that we have with the facilities that take care of our protected persons. For example, a skilled nursing facility in Carson City that houses upwards to 26 of our protected persons, almost all that have some form of dementia. The staff loves, cares, and is diligent in taking care of all the patients and we've had developed such a great relationship with the management, the A P N, the nursing director, and each one of the R Ns, L P Ns, and the C N As, that we are both hugged when entering and leaving the facility as they have seen that we respond immediately when needed, we visit regularly even when not needed, and treat our clients with the utmost respect. The staff has told us numerous times that they love us as public guardians. We are able to recently transfer one of our clients from out of state and bring them back to Carson City solely on the relationship that we had with a director at this facility, at one of the facilities. John and I worked diligently to try and reduce the Medicaid spending by moving patients from more restrictive and more expensive facilities to less restrictive and less expensive facilities. This is best for the client and it's best for Carson City as the city pays for much of the Medicaid costs and the federal government pays the other half. The program is administered by the state of Nevada and we expect to move at least two more patients out of state, that are out of state currently, to less expensive facilities in Nevada and save Carson City approximately $80,000 just on those two clients. Currently, we have two full-time employees. One employee is on leave. We have a part-time employee, Claudette Springmeyer, who has guardianship experience, we're very fortunate to have in our office. And we have 44 clients living in assisted living skilled nursing facilities, they're called, two people that are living in their own home, one at a motel, eight at a group home. Out of state currently, we have three clients remaining. The last board meeting that I had, we had six, so we have dropped that significantly. We have five cases that are deceased clients that are not closed, so that brings our total to 21 deceased clients from November of 2017. The other cases that I reported to you last quarter are closed currently.
So Jean, right now, we have 44 protected public.
Forty-four that are in a skilled nursing facility. Out of those, the total number of clients is 74, but that doesn't represent the number that are at skilled nursing facilities or group homes. That number is actually 54.
Okay, thank you.
Of those, we have one case that was dropped, seven cases that are pending. We have five that are blocked accounts, so really there's not a guardianship on those accounts. And then we have fees that we've collected from January of 2019 to present of $31,532.49. That means our total number of clients is 74 for this report. We have volunteer hours of 350 hours that we have utilized in the past quarter and a half. And that represents, I think, a favor to the budget for our clients. I also wanted to report some status in our office, if that would be pleasurable to the board. And Claudette, you have her.
Good morning, Claudette Springmeyer.
Good morning.
So this is my third week, so, but as Jean referred, I did do that job for a little while, about eight-plus years in Douglas County, so wasn't quite ready after 30-plus years at the county not to not work, so this works out good for, hopefully for both of us. So as far as the office goes, they're in the process of updating, and I should say "we" because I'll be part of that, updating current business continuity plans and standard operating procedures. The files are more organized or we're getting there and in the process of being streamlined. The bank accounts for the clients had to all be opened as new accounts and QuickBooks updated for each of the clients. And then the statement cutoff dates were all moved to the 10th and divided among several weeks for reconciliation, so they weren't staggering in, we just have them on an even cycle. Online bill pay and banking is helping to make the financial part of the task more efficient and easy. And so I used QuickBooks as well and, but I didn't use it as extensively and so I'm learning a lot, but I concede definitely the value to the way Jean is setting that up, so. And she's providing training for that on the parts that I didn't deal with in the past, so I'm also appreciative of that. And then the process and procedures are in place with the ability to track our metrics and be able to understand where to commit our time and resources, those that we can control. In that job, the clients often dictate our schedule because we don't know when we're getting called to a facility or a doctor's appointment or you name it. You figure what goes on in, I always try to explain it to people, what goes in on in a single household, we're doing times the number of clients that we have from as small as paying a few bills to a facility to the whole gamut of what's involved with that person. Standard operating procedures, business continuity plans, for example, setting up binders and stuff. Catastrophic events and plans and procedures are in process and being either updated or revised. Onboarding process for the clients is being updated with a checklist to ensure accuracy and standards and standard procedures are being followed. And then I think that what Jean's trying to do as well, from what I can see, is division and overlap of duties for balancing accounts and updating that and, you know, maybe splitting up clients and then rotating so we're all familiar with all of the clients. Thank you.
And I would like, speaker, thank you. And then I would like to add, thank you very much to Madam Paulson and Madam Frelick for allowing us to have Claudette in our office. She has been a difference maker in helping us, as well as John Giomi. We also have been able to utilize legal counsel resources to ensure that we're doing things right and following the correct laws and statutes. That has been very helpful. And then John on the Medicaid.
Thank you. Claudette and I worked closely together in Douglas County for almost seven years when I was running a program called SAFE, Special Advocates for Elders, and we were representing upwards of 65, 70 clients at a time and most of them working with Claudette. And so we've worked so closely together through so many difficult circumstances, this is just a breath of fresh air to have her in to see what's going on. But one of the most important things that we have is Medicaid responsibilities. The city is responsible for indigent people and Carson City is a magnet, has been a magnet for low-income people because of the housing situation with the multitude of manufactured houses and such, and the fact that people have moved here without families and no one to take care of them. So one of the first things that we look at, that our legal counsel looks at, Laura Miles, is there's someone else to be guardian? In most of the cases, there's not. There's no family that are here. And if there is family here, there may be an EPS investigation, elder protective services investigation, so the case comes to us. In many cases, many situations, we then have to figure out how to get these people paid for. When you go to assisted living, if they have money, it's not terribly expensive. There's a facility in the community that you can have a shared room for $2,500, $2,600 a month. But if there's no money, no resources to that person, then we can't place that person in that facility because Medicaid only allows us to place a person in skilled nursing, which costs in a minimum $7,000 a month. You would think that would be illogical and it is, but they have a program called a waiver program where if someone is capable of being in assisted living, that you have to apply for waiver and can move them to assisted living. So the way Medicaid works, the money that a person has is allocated to the cost of the facility. So like the first, so if you're at skilled nursing, $7,000 a month and the person makes $1,035 a month from Social Security, $1,000 goes to the facility, the other $6,000 is split between the city and the federal government. State of Nevada, who we assume is paying for this, doesn't, they're just the administrator. And we have to go through the administrator to make this person qualified, which is my responsibility and eventually will be passed on to, shared with Claudette. And the problem is, is that we have people where we don't have their financial wherewithal to know what's happened. And there's a five-year lookback that the Medicaid can have and if there's a problem with an individual where the child has been there and taken money, they may not qualify for Medicaid, which means the whole responsibility is on the city of Carson. So we have a lot of impact to the city of Carson at the public guardians' office in dealing with these people and making sure we get them on Medicaid. For example, a month ago, one of our clients that's been on Medicaid in assisted living, $2,500 a month, her $1,000 of Social Security goes to the facility, she gets to keep $120 for personal expenses, and then the city and the federal government split the remainder, which isn't very much money, really nice to put them in assisted living. But all of a sudden, I get a letter from Medicaid says, well, she had all this money in these banks, what have you done about it? I said, well, let us find out. Tell us where these banks are because we don't have access to it and I'll go find the money, but in the meantime, please don't take her off Medicaid, keep her on Medicaid, but we'll go find out where the money is, if there's all this money, and we'll get the money and pay it back to you, to finish it up, Jean. The problem is, there was, they erred. If we hadn't gone back to them and demanded, having a hearing, we'd have lost this person that had to pay Medicaid back and go after money that wasn't there. All of a sudden, I get a letter saying she's reinstated. So what we try to do in all of our situations is to make sure they're in the least restrictive facility possible because it's best for the individual, it's best for the city, it's best for the entire process. So it's something we have to look after. I have to comment that Jean has one of the nicest hearts, the biggest souls, cares so much about our residents, these 70-plus residents that have dementia, that sometimes love you, sometimes hate you, sometimes call you names, but she has the love for these people, just like Claudette and I do, and we work to try to keep them as healthy and as focused in living their lives in these facilities as possible and making sure that the facilities take care of them properly. That's our responsibility. Thank you.
Got it? Is that it? We've got a couple of questions up here for you.
And I was just going to speak to our volunteer corps as a final piece. We have dedicated volunteers who have been giving their time freely to this office and to the city of Carson. We've calculated their time to total over 100 hours a month. They help us with things like shopping for our clients, they bring birthday cards and gifts to our clients, they raise money to allow Santa to give gifts to the clients for the holidays, they help to file the massive amounts of paperwork that flows through our office, and they assist with client inventories, bill pay processes, and they help with the telephone when we need it. So we have calculated 350 hours. I think that's a little light, but I want to thank Cindy, Lacy, Carmella, Barbara, and two other people that are in the process, Gwen and Helen, for joining on our volunteer corps. They're vital to helping us in Carson City. And if the board would have any questions or concerns, I would be happy to.
We got, there's a couple of questions up here. Let me just ask this as a kind of a financial issue. We had any checks written on protected persons' accounts that have been returned NSF?
Yes, we have.
Why?
So when I first became director for the office, we didn't know the balances directly in all of the accounts because the accounts had to be closed and reopened and there were some accounts that were still open under the previous guardian's name and transitioned over to my name, so it was very difficult to ascertain what the balances were in those accounts, the real correct balances in QuickBooks. So I did as best as I could and I want to report that we have not had any bounced checks since probably December.
So I want to dive in a little bit and have an understanding. It says blocked accounts, five. Can you, can you give me more detail as, what is a blocked account?
That's a great question, Ms. Bagwell. Blocked account is a court-ordered account that has a sum of money that a judge has ordered for the public guardians' office to be on. Currently, I am on several of those accounts and we are transitioning some of them to go back to the families so that we will be removed from them. And there's a couple that are still under the previous guardian that are being transitioned.
So may I clarify, so you may just have financial control of the money, but not the person? Is that what a blocked account?
Correct. It's just financial control of that money. It's in a blocked account, so I'm not really.
Just to protect somebody during a court, okay.
Yep, and some of them are minors, so that's something that we're working on with our legal counsel.
Okay. And then my other question, if I may. Can you tell me, so now that you've been in the job for a while, what do you think you face as your greatest challenge going forward?
That also is an excellent question. There are many challenges that are in our office and it is, there's a lot of diverse things that are happening at the same time. And I think it's keeping up with the paper workflow in our office and making sure that we're meeting in person with all of our protected persons so that we can really advocate for their medical and financial well-being and know each one of them. It's really vital that we know who they are and what their desires are. They are human beings and as such, we have a grave responsibility to make sure that we're just not making blanket decisions for people without consulting what they may really want in their lives or maybe even in their end of life. Several of them now that have passed, as you see, I had a large caseload that had passed, you really have to ascertain if they had any religious preferences. So now we've made arrangements, for example, with the Carson City Cemetery, that their cremains can go to the columbarium there and we have a rabbi, a pastor, a priest, whatever that protected person would have wanted, come and say a few words for them as a way to make sure that we're respecting what their wishes were.
First, I wanted to compliment you on the work you've done. I've spent the last five years taking care of a relative who had dementia and I had guardianship along with my brother of that relative and it is a chore. And so really, I, on behalf of the people who have to come under your care, I appreciate your diligence in taking care of them and your concern about them because you're really doing amazing work from that aspect.
Thank you very much.
I'd also like to comment, John, on a wonderful last name. And, well, we can debate that, Mayor, but I'm wondering if, Jean, over time, as a matter of perspective for us from the board, if it's possible to do either year-over-year or month-over-month statistics, it's just sort of a side-by-side comparison in terms of these key figures. I think it would help give us some perspective because we don't live it the way you do in terms of how those things change. I don't want to add a tremendous amount of work to the work you already have to do, but if that can be done relatively easily in terms of just a little bar graph that shows, you know, either year-over-year or month-over-month and just sort of the progression, it gives us a sense of what the workload is like and. And I think, I personally think it would be helpful. So that's my only comment. Thank you.
I will make sure that that's included.
Any other questions? Anybody? Public want to weigh in? Anybody? Okay. This is discussion only, so thank you very much, Jean. Thanks, Claudette. John? You are good-looking. Stacy up here is good-looking too, so not going to get-
Trying to get out of it.
I'm trying to get out of my statement. Trying to weasel out. Oh, way too late. All right. We're going to take a break for 10 minutes. We'll come back at 10:30. We'll pick up. The next item would be, let's see, where are we?
So as you said, this is before you to approve the grant and us accepting the grant and
Eighteen, okay?
then a subaward to Douglas County. The grant period is from April 1st, 2019 to March 31st, 2022. We applied for more than the $300,000. We got a call from Title 10, which is family planning, and they asked us to rework our budget and submit for $300,000, which we did. We've had to adjust some things, but we did it. So in some of the adjustments that we made within the grant, we had the advanced practice registered nurse, or the APRN, at her full salary in the grant. We brought that down to 70%, and the remaining will be paid with income from, or revenue from billing and that. We also are looking at, we're meeting quarterly to look at the program, see what changes need to be made because, as you know, each year salaries go up and that. So we will be reviewing the program on a quarterly basis and see where we can adjust. We're waiting for the legislature to take action on the family planning state grant, and so we will be applying for that also. Within the Douglas County agreement, I did make the changes requested by Supervisor Von Kowski, and those are on page seven of the subgrant. And item 3D, it should be subgrantee instead of grantee. And I also changed item B to be subgrantee. So I will take any questions.
Does a subgrant from, to Douglas County come out of the $300,000, or does that stand on its own?
No, it comes out of the $300,000.
So really, $260,000 is coming to us, thereabouts?
Right, right. What we do is we have the total $300,000, and then they submit requests for reimbursements to us. We do have part of our grant analyst position that is supported by Douglas County for the fiscal piece of that. And we also have a portion of the clinical services manager, Ronnie Gallus, that is supported for her oversight of that grant. And the reason we go in for, with Douglas County, it's, you know, looking at the population base, and we have provided those services down in Douglas County in the past.
Okay. Supervisor Jome.
Nikki, my question is just that. You brought that up. Is it beneficial for us to continue this partnership with Douglas County as opposed to having them just apply for the funds directly themselves? I understand there's some overlap there, which you just spoke to in terms of some of their funds providing support from a financial perspective for us. But, so I guess that's the question I want to know. Is it beneficial to our community and our citizens to continue that cooperative effort? Is it, or is it detrimental to us, or is it sort of neutral?
I would, to the citizens, I would say, getting the grant, it's beneficial because it increases our population. And, you know, as these grants are getting smaller and smaller, they're looking at that, what amount of services are you providing per population? And we've got a very efficient program, and we do provide services to a lot of individuals. So in obtaining the grant, it's very beneficial. And it can be, and I don't know the stats on this, but it can be viewed as beneficial in that you've got a Carson City resident that's living in Carson City but working in Douglas County. They can access those services in Douglas County. This grant is directly from the federal government, and an entity, and a new grantee coming in and trying to get a federal grant may be difficult for Douglas County.
Other questions, Nikki? Public comment? Anybody? I don't see any board ready. Go ahead. Supervisor Bagwell.
I move to approve and accept the Title 10 Family Planning Grant and to authorize the subgrant award to Douglas County in the amounts discussed on the record and to make the corrections of subgrant as noted.
Second. There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pos, nay, carry. Thank you, Nikki. All right. All right, let's take up item 19. This is under Parks and Recreation, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Approval of Cooperative Agreement Between Carson City and Carson Rifle and Pistol Club Regarding the Rifle Range. Jennifer, how are you doing today?
I'm wonderful. Thank you, Mayor.
Good.
Jennifer Budge, Parks and Recreation Director. Before you today is a proposed-
Nikki Aker, Director of Carson City Health and Human Services.
So, as you said, this is before you to approve the grant and us accepting the grant and then a sub award to Douglas County. The grant period is from April 1st, 2019 to March 31st, 2022. We applied for more than the $300,000. We got a call from Title 10, which is Family Planning, and they asked us to rework our budget and submit for $300,000. So, which we did. We've had to adjust some things, but we did it. So, and some of the adjustments that we made within the grant, we had a advanced practice registered nurse, or the APRN, at her full salary in the grant. We brought that down to 70%, and the remaining will be paid with income from, or revenue from billing and that. We also are looking at, we're meeting quarterly to look at the program, see what changes need to be made, because as you know, each year salaries go up and that. So, we will be reviewing the program on a quarterly basis and see where we can adjust. We're waiting for the legislature to take action on the Family Planning State Grant, and so we will be applying for that also. Within the Douglas County agreement, I did make the changes requested by Supervisor Von Kowski, and those are on page seven of the sub grant. And Item 3D, it should be sub grantee instead of grantee, and I also changed Item B to be sub grantee. So, I will take any questions.
Does a sub grant from, to Douglas County come out of the $300,000, or does that stand on its own?
No, it comes out of the $300,000.
So, really, $260,000 is coming to us, thereabouts.
Right, right. What we do is we have the total $300,000, and then they submit requests for reimbursements to us. We do have part of our grant analyst position that is supported by Douglas County for the fiscal piece of that, and we also have a portion of the clinical services manager, Ronnie Gallus, that is supported for her oversight of that grant.
Okay.
And the reason we go in for, with Douglas County, it's, you know, looking at the population base, and we have provided those services down in Douglas County in the past.
Okay. Supervisor Jome.
Nikki, my question is just that, you brought that up. Is it beneficial for us to continue this partnership with Douglas County as opposed to having them just apply for the funds directly themselves? I understand there's some overlap there, which you just spoke to in terms of some of their funds providing support from a financial perspective for us. But, so I guess that's, that's the question I want to know. Is it, is it beneficial to our community and our citizens to continue that cooperative effort? Is it, or is it detrimental to us, or is it sort of neutral?
I would, to the, to the citizens, I would say, getting the grant, it's beneficial because it increases our population, and that, you know, as these grants are getting smaller and smaller, they're looking at that, what, what amount of services are you providing per population? And we've got a very efficient program, and we do provide services to a lot of individuals. So, in obtaining the grant, it's very beneficial. And it can be, and I don't know the stats on this, but it can be viewed as beneficial in that you've got a Carson City resident that's living in, living in Carson City but working in Douglas County. They can access those services in Douglas County. This grant is directly from the federal government, and an entity, and a new grantee coming in and trying to get a federal grant may be difficult for Douglas County.
Other questions, Nikki? Public comment? Anybody? I don't see any board ready. Go ahead, Supervisor Bagwell.
I move to approve and accept the Title 10 Family Planning Grant and to authorize the sub grant award to Douglas County in the amounts discussed on the record and to make the corrections of sub grant as noted.
Second. There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried. Thank you, Nikki. All right. All right, let's take up Item 19. This is under Parks and Recreation. Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Approval of Cooperative Agreement Between Carson City and Carson Rifle and Pistol Club Regarding the Rifle Range. Jennifer, how are you doing today?
I'm wonderful, thank you, Mayor.
Good.
Jennifer Budge, Parks and Recreation Director. Before you today is a proposed interim agreement for a six-month time period between Carson City and the Carson Rifle and Pistol Club, a local nonprofit group that's been helping with the range for over 20 years. The current agreement expired on April 16th, so this would be an interim agreement to try to move us forward while we're trying to get some improvements on site and help us with operations as well. I did want to apologize about the late material. I thought the red lines went through, so I just wanted to point out what the changes were to the agreement. They were requested by the District Attorney's Office. Dan Hughes here, he's helped us with those additions. Ben Johnson's also available if there's questions. But, they were basically additions to the contract with the standard language in most parts. One was the language to allow the city to close the range or just hours at its discretion.
Where are you?
Yeah.
Oh. There's an addition on 3A, the second sentence, about the city retaining authority to alter the operational hours. And there's nothing on page four, or page one or two. Then if you go to page six, there's the addition of a new number 11, which is the waiver of breach. Then Item 12, about the termination and adding Item B, was added about terminating the agreement, or an option to terminate the agreement if needed, if there's a public safety issue. And then Item 15, it created a new 15 about independent contractor language, and just to clarify that they're not city employees. Also, Item 16 under that same section, severability, and 17, governing law and jurisdiction, again, standard language that are typically in our city contracts. And the club has reviewed those agreements, made adjustments, and we've mutually agreed upon all the language presented.
Looks like the lawyers got a hold of it.
They did, they did. And it works for everybody. I do want to point out, we didn't have a Parks and Recreation Commission meeting for them to review this. We didn't have a quorum for the April meeting, but the Range Task Force did review this, and all of their comments have been incorporated in the document. I do have the President of the Carson Rifle and Pistol Club, Chris Carver, is available if you have questions for them, and any other questions on the document.
Chris, you want to come up? You don't have to, but you're welcome to come up and confirm or not confirm that you guys are okay with this.
Morning, Mr. Mayor.
Morning.
Board. Chris Carver, President Rifle, Carson Rifle and Pistol Club. We did review this, and the revised language is provided by the District Attorney, and this is acceptable to the club.
Okay, thank you. All right. Questions of either of, anybody? Looks like, okay, well, we'll try it out here in the audience. Anybody in the audience want to, any public want to weigh in? Okay, we'll take a motion.
I move to approve the cooperative agreement that was handed out at the meeting this morning as late material for Item 19.
Second. There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried. Thanks very much, and thanks to your club.
Thank you.
All right, let's take up Item 20. This is Public Works. You're always coming in here with these, these, you know, I don't know if they're remainder pieces, but they're tiny pieces. All right, go ahead. I see you got Mr. Stuckey there with you, so that's a pair to draw to. Go ahead.
Thank you. For the record, Stephanie Hicks, Real Property Manager. The item before you today is for discussion and possible action regarding the transfer of approximately 7,147 square feet of land adjacent to Governor's Square Park. This particular property contains a 15-foot drainage easement, and it's an area that the city currently maintains, and I have it highlighted and read up there on the screen. I did also kind of do a zoom in so that we can see a little more in detail. So, currently, there's a drainage easement, and the city does maintain that property. Homes on those adjacent parcels have not been constructed yet, but shortly will be. And so, there is a proposal to dedicate or donate that property to the city in fee title, and that will allow for access that's not restricted in any way. Those parcels would then not be fenced or cross-fenced, which would, could make it more difficult for us to maintain that drainage easement. And so, the proposal before you is to both consider accepting that property in fee title and author, also authorizing the city engineer to sign the lot line adjustment, which is typically an administrative review process.
Okay. We've got some questions up here. I don't, I didn't see this first, Stacy, and then Brad.
So, two questions. If, is there a fence there now? And if, if there's a fence now, is it, where is the fence now? I didn't get a chance to drive by, so.
Yeah, there's no fence there now.
Okay, so, so the fence then would be constructed on, by, by the property owners, and it would not be, I was concerned about having dual fences, you said, and I know that's what you're trying to prevent, I just want to make sure there wasn't a fence there, and we had to incur a cost to move the fence, or something like that, but, okay. And then the other question is, does, does this 15 feet have to be resurveyed on each parcel and marked, or has that already been done? And if it hasn't been done, who pays for that?
Thank you. The lot line adjustment will actually make that adjustment to the parcel lines, and those new deeds will be recorded as part of the lot line adjustment. So, that's something that the city did not have to pay for. Actually, the consultant for the property owner, for the developer, has already provided that to the city.
So, it's actually been, okay, thank you. That's it.
So, there was a granting of minor variance for these parcels. With the granting of that variance, will these lots now be in compliance with all the conditions of approval for the subdivision?
Yes, thank you. That was something that we needed to circle back around and do in regards to this, because it was going to result in lot sizes that were smaller than what was originally approved. They made that application with the planning department, which allows for minor variance when it's less than, I think, 10% of the lot size, and so that review and approval has been made by the planning department.
And the variance was on setbacks, rear property line setbacks, and on minimum lot size. There were no other variances.
That's correct. It was lot sizes, lot widths, and rear setbacks.
Any other questions of either Dan or Stephanie? Anybody? Public comment on this issue? Anybody? Motion's in order. Supervisor Von Kowski.
I move to accept the donation of land as described on the record from Reno Sun LLC to Carson City and authorize the city engineer to initiate and sign a lot line adjustment with Reno Sun LLC in order to incorporate the acreage into the adjacent city-owned property known as Assessor's Parcel Number 004-016-03.
Second. There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried. Okay, thank you on that one. Let's take up the next one. This is Item 21. Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Adoption of a Resolution Determining the Lease of Approximately 31 Square Feet of Carson City Right-of-Way Adjacent to 123 West Second Street to the L'Pico Family Trust, L'Piccolo Family Trust 1998 Trust, L'Piccolo Family 1998 Trust, DBA L'Piccolo Investments LLC for an automated teller machine. We're going to discuss that, whether that's in the best interest of Carson City or go from there. So, you want to take us through what's going on here?
Yes, thank you. For the record, Stephanie Hicks, Real Property Manager. September of last year, Mrs. L'Piccolo contacted the city in regards to a request for an easement for an ATM located adjacent to her property at 123 West Second Street. As I think you are all aware, the Wells Fargo that is downtown, if it, if it hasn't closed already, will be closing, and so there has been a search by Wells Fargo for an appropriate location, and this location was selected. In that initial discussion with Mrs. L'Piccolo, we asked for easements that were provided in your, or pardon me, descriptions that were provided in your package that would show the location of what was being proposed, and I do have an exhibit of that that is being demonstrated up there. We, through our analysis, determined that an easement wasn't necessarily the appropriate agreement, and based on the fact that we have a lease agreement with Bank of America, that, that particular ATM is adjacent to City Hall, we determined that a lease agreement was the appropriate avenue for, for this type of arrangement. Unfortunately, due to some departure of staff, it took us a little longer to get this to you than we would have liked, but we are here today to present a lease agreement for 31 square feet of city right-of-way that will be utilized for purposes of the ATM. I also have Deputy DA Todd Reese here to go through some of the particulars of the terms and what we have, have outlined in our lease agreement.
You sure this is near Bailey Wick? I thought you were doing water, Todd.
I'm all over the place, really.
Good for you. Multi-purpose, that's all right.
Multi-purpose, absolutely. Todd Reese, Deputy District Attorney, for the record. When we first initially looked at the lease, one of the things we were trying to determine is, is the appropriate rent for it. We looked at commercial and retail space, which would have resulted in a $38 to a $50 per month lease. The existing Bank of America lease that we have is for 215 per month for 50 square feet, which would equate to about 129 per month for 31 square feet. But we also looked at, took a survey of other ATM leases, really throughout the country, and a lot of those are municipal leases, and those ranged from 350 a month to 1,500 per month, and they were generally not tied to the square footage. It was more because this was an ATM, a different price was warranted. The average of those was approximately 1,000 per month for those that set a dollar amount per month. Many of the leases also set a, a percentage of, percentage of transactions or percentage of income amount that was shared between the parties. We determined that in this case, simply a set amount per month would be more acceptable to the city, and we initially proposed $500, and we came down to $400. We think this is a fair amount, but we have not reached agreement with the L'Piccolos on, on the rent amount. Since this lease was sent, was, was attached as material to the, to the agenda, Mrs. L'Piccolo did make a few other requests for changes to it. Some of these requests were acceptable to, to the city, in, in particular, and this, in Section 2.3, Mrs. L'Piccolo requested that we delete the last clause of that section, and we agreed to it. This section generally contemplates termination of the lease where placement of an ATM wasn't possible. In that case, continued payment of the rent was a non-issue. In that regard, also, the, that particular provision called out the payment of the rent, but it wouldn't necessarily be precluded by the existing, by the existing language. The next section was in 15.2. The deleted provisions pertain to reletting the premises. After thinking about it, there would seem to be practical problems with reletting 31 square feet of sidewalk, so I agreed to delete this one as well.
Any questions of either Stephanie or Todd before we move to the next? Who's going, who's going to do it from the L'Piccolo Family Trust?
I will. Is this, yeah. Jenny L'Piccolo.
Mark L'Piccolo.
For the record. I don't agree with the 400 a month, and so I had proposed, my last proposal was 250 a month as a lease rate, and the reasons for that are, it's of no use to anyone other than, you know, for this specific purpose. And I don't, you know, and I asked Todd to justify to me why they, you know, felt it was worth 400.
I should ask this. Is the ATM machine on city property supposed to go?
Most, most of it will be. 31 square feet of it will be on city right-of-way, and approximately three square feet would be on the L'Piccolo, L'Piccolo property, and I believe, I don't know the exact agreement between the L'Piccolos and Wells Fargo as far as utilities, but that wouldn't be coming from the city.
Okay. Jenny, I didn't mean to cut you off. Go ahead.
That's okay. So, if you have any questions about that, or, you know.
Okay, let's see where we go here. Supervisor Jome, and then Supervisor Barrett.
My question is relative to sidewalk space. Are we still maintaining adequate sidewalk widths, distances, curb cuts for ADA access, et cetera, et cetera?
Thank you. Stephanie Hicks, Real Property Manager. Yes, for the record, that was something that we, we considered, and it was a conditional, so they will come in and there will be development review as, as there would for, you know, any construction project, and it does have to meet the clear space and ADA requirements for the rest of the sidewalk to be utilized correctly.
And there's sufficient space.
There is.
So, as I look at this, I mean, we're talking about the ATM machine, sorry, that's redundant. The ATM sticking into the sidewalk, seven some odd feet, correct?
Correct.
Am I reading that correct?
Correct.
Well, that's not correct.
Well, that's what that shows.
Yeah, the ATM itself is four feet by four feet. The city decided that they needed to allow a big, we needed extra space.
Well, there's space for people to be utilizing it and not blocking access or walkway.
Right, right. Yeah, that's basically what the seven feet deep is for, is for people to be standing there.
Thank you.
John, and then Lori.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was intrigued by the research you did. I think that's great. I appreciate it. However, in, in my world, and probably some other people's, real estate is local, 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 location, location, location. So, I'm not sure that national, you know, figure really relates here. Secondarily, you wanted 500, came down to 400. Your figure, if I recall correctly, is 129, and so when I took the 400 from the 129, I split the difference, divided it, and I come up with 254. Jenny and I haven't talked about this, but seems like her figures are a little closer to the, to my way of thinking. Correct me if I'm wrong in any of that.
I don't necessarily think you're wrong in any of that. You, that is certainly one way of looking at it, and absolutely, and I can't necessarily criticize that way of looking at it.
No, no need about that, but justify why you think the 400 works, then.
The 400 was justified from the standpoint of, you know, just an average ATM rent. The average, from what I can find, is approximately $1,000 a month. Splitting that between the two parties would be $500 a month. Allowing, allowing leeway for utilities and other things brings it down further. And so, we arrived at 400 a month.
Thank you. It's good to know your rationale, and I don't think you're wrong necessarily either. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori, I'm sorry.
So, I guess I look at this in a couple of ways, and one, I assume that this means Wells Fargo is going to be paying an amount per month for the privilege of having the ATM there.
Correct.
Okay. So, that means that the property that the city is going to give up for that space has value, right? Because a commercial, there's commercial interest to that. I can look at this a couple of ways and say, the city's giving up 31 square feet, and you're giving up three square feet. So, I fail to understand why the potential of a 50-50 split with a small variance for your utility costs is not reasonable. This is, I don't know, I look at it as it's our job to protect the city property and then to get a then to get a fair market if we're going to give something up that now. And so I need you to explain to me why, on behalf of the taxpayers, we shouldn't take the $400. Could we just go to Wells Fargo ourself, not attach it to your building, and get more money? I mean, is there another locate? If I'm going to give up city property for a use, I'm going to need an explanation the other way.
They could have gone straight to the city if the city had a location that would work for them, but the, what they need from us is utility lines, security lines, data lines. They need a space within the building and access to the building to take care of those. They need a computer terminal space. All of that is included in their lease. Bringing the utilities in that they need as opposed to connecting to our existing utilities is cost prohibitive, so they would not look at any spot where an owner cannot provide that. We have a spot on our lot that is no city property. It's their alternative location, and we can move it. I mean, we can decide to do that. I don't think it's as, I don't think it's as good a spot for the public. This was, I thought, you know, people would see it, they'd know it was there because it's on the corner of Carson and Second.
And so I don't think using the Bank of America as a comparison is necessarily an equivalency either, because it was a bank before the city got, there's a lot more involved in the negotiations and the issues that dealt with the ATM that's connected with City Hall. And it's, I don't even know how old now, but it's been a longstanding deal, so I don't think that's a fair market comparison or objective to use in this decision process. And so I just look at everything as it's city property, and it's our job to do what's in the best interest of the public whenever we...
I understand, yeah.
So I'm going to support the 400.
Yeah, Brad and Stacy, then John.
Jenny, what's the lease rate for Wells Fargo?
A thousand.
And what are your estimated expenses?
I don't, I just don't know what the utilities are going to run.
Do you have a general estimate?
I would say a couple hundred a month for electric and data and cable, Wi-Fi.
And did Wells Fargo give you an estimate of the number of transactions that they expect at this location?
No.
Because a lot of the ATM leases I've seen are based on a fee per transaction, so I'm just trying to get an idea of alternate...
This is not, it's just a flat lease. It's a five-year lease with two five-year extensions. When I started this back in September and I was negotiating with Wells Fargo, frankly, I told them if it's not a thousand a month or more, I'm not interested. It is just not worth the hassle. Okay, I've been going around and around since September to get a simple easement. That's what we requested. We provided what we were supposed to provide, I think the end of October, to the city, meaning the engineering and et cetera, reports that you have in front of you. So this is, you know, this is already, it's almost more hassle than it's worth to us.
Thank you.
I just, you know, the fair market value thing is a difficult thing to quantify, but I agree with Lori in the sense that we're sort of setting a standard here because the city took over South Carson Street, and there are going to be a significant number of land leases that come to us that we're taking over from the state. And I know that hasn't come before the body yet, but I know it's going to. And some of those leases, the ones that I've reviewed in the past, I have to tell you, are ridiculously low. I don't think they're anywhere near fair market value, and that doesn't directly bear on this, but I'm just cognizant that we need to be fair as we start this process, and there are going to be a lot of these going forward that we're going to have to deal with. And I want to be fair to you, but we also have to be fair to the public's property. So that's the struggle in my mind.
John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lori and Stacy made good points, but I go back to the view that if you throw out the 129 for the current city, which may be valid, you also have to throw out all the talk about anywhere else, so you come down to the city. So again, I go back to my old inclination to split differences, and I would say, you're talking 400, so I'll talk 300, but they want 250. I really don't know what's right here. Your precedent argument, though, really makes some sense to me, Stacy, but at the same time, I'm a real free enterprise guy. I don't want to give away the city property, but I think Mr. Lopiccolo's point that it's not going to be used for anything else, and it's not going to interfere with city operations. Maybe we could, maybe we could start a bidding war for ATM spots, but I don't think 400 works for me, but you guys go ahead and do what you have the votes to do.
Any other comments from?
I want to comment that, you know, the city did find that this would be beneficial to the public. It would be, you know, in the public's interest to have that downtown. Besides the B of A, that there are no, hardly any remaining banks downtown, and very, and besides the B of A ATM, I don't believe there's any other bank ATMs downtown. So the property itself that, you know, that this unit would sit on, again, is four by four, and I understand, you know, why they wanted it to be larger, but the actual space that it will take up is four by four feet.
Anybody else want to weigh in?
I'd like to say something. I just want a clarification. So when we did the plaza, we gave up almost all the space in a easement agreement with the city for the stage, and I don't understand why this can't be an easement. I don't understand why we had to pay anything. I'll just be honest with you.
Well, I guess there are a lot of people in town who would want to say that too, but...
Well, I know, but I'm just saying that that was a lot of square footage for the stage, and we gave an easement for that, just did it because it was good for the, otherwise there was no stage going to happen, and I just feel like, I don't know why this can't be an easement. I just...
Because I, we've already signed the lease with Wells Fargo, and obviously I have an out, and I will probably use it, but the agreement was based on us obtaining an easement. So I've got, and the lease itself is about 60 pages, so I've got to go through that lease and redo the whole thing and get it back to their national, you know, coordinator for real estate and go over it with them, and then their attorneys have to review it. So I'm basically going back to starting at scratch because of the way that they've decided to make it a lease instead of an easement, which never came up, and I never heard a word about it until Todd, you know, contacted me six months down the road. So they've been waiting seven months, we've been waiting seven months for what I think is a fairly simple agreement that, truthfully, I could have written in about an hour.
Cool.
I was just going to ask, what was the basis for lease versus an easement?
When we first analyzed this under a different deputy DA, we were looking at the fact that the lease that we had was, what we had with Bank of America was a lease, and there were some more opportunities for provisions for us to put that in the lease agreement than simply just doing an easement, and so that was the reason that we decided to go that direction.
I had an objection to several things in the lease, but I backed off of those in the interest of possibly moving forward on this.
John.
Correct me if I'm wrong, you're not now telling me that an easement is possible, you're just saying this was a preference. I mean, by law, you could do an easement, or couldn't you?
Yeah.
I mean, or we could do it, put it that way, we could.
From a legal perspective, I think the board could. Also, from a legal perspective, I think that a lease is the better legal option, because we have more flexibility with lease and we're able to protect the city a little bit better than from the standpoint of an easement.
Well, I believe that was changed to a lease so that the city could charge money.
Yeah, given Stacy's message about precedent, perhaps I don't disagree with you, but I just, I was getting vibes that you were backed into a corner and had to do a lease rather than, that you could have done one and just preferred to do the other. Thank you.
Did you turn that back on, John?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was going to say you're not done. All right. Anybody in the public want to weigh in on this? I don't see any. Board, the required Solomon up here again. So what do you want to do? It's your pleasure. You know, my own two cents is, you know, whether it's a lease or an easement, it's taxpayer property, and I think we have to be very careful with that, and I, you know, the Lopiccolo family has done wonders in McFadden Plaza, and can't say a word, you know, we wouldn't be there without the effort of Mark and Jenny there. On the other side of that coin, you know, we've got an issue going on here where there is, it is public property, and so the question is, how do you value that? And it can't be free. I mean, if we're in the business of giving property away, we should all be fired up here.
Yeah, I didn't expect it to be free.
So, you know, my own sense is, I tend to agree with what Stacy says, is, you know, we're setting a precedent because this is going to go down the road. And, you know, I weigh that precedent value versus, you know, we're arguing over 150 bucks a month. Yeah, but, you know, my own sense is, you know, that it's taxpayer property, I can go with a 400, I get where you guys are coming from, but I think, you know, if we're going to be doing, look at doing these down the road, we have to be careful because this will set a market, my own two cents, but that's just me, so.
I'm there with you. I just think that we're going to be negotiating and doing all the other properties with the exchange on the freeway, on the road for South Carson, and we're going to have the same issue that's faced with all the owners of those properties asking for, and I think you have every right, in a negotiation, you should go as low as you can, that's your side of the table, so I don't fault you at all for that, right? Everything's a negotiation, but I just really feel we need to value this property and protect the city's interest in that and the public's interest in it. And so I'd say the first thing is, yes, an ATM downtown is a good thing, which is why we're willing even to enter into a lease, because we have determined that it would be beneficial, but I would like to stick to the 400.
Well, I understand Lori's points. I understand everybody's points here. It's really, as the mayor has indicated, it's Solomon time, and this is why we get paid the big bucks. I have to say, though, that we do have a precedent, we already have, in terms of the Bank of America, but I don't think that holds complete water, I don't think. So I would, again, go back to my, let's find a compromise that works for everybody, and so I'll just throw out the figure of 300 a month, which is more than, more than they'd like and less than we'd like.
What, is that a motion?
Not yet, I'm just, we're still in discussion. I will, I will make the motion if you think that makes some sense.
Well, I don't know if we're there yet, let's, are we ready for a motion? Let's see where it goes, if you want to do that.
I'm just reading here from other colleagues.
Silence is golden.
At 400, you know, if you're talking about setting a precedent for other properties down the road, it's about 13, is it?
Twelve point nine.
12.9 per foot per month.
And what would it be at 250?
I don't think anybody's going to pay that down the road. That's the precedent you're setting.
Bank of America, I mean, Wells Fargo's going to pay you 1,000, so they valued, I guess I can look at it that way too, right? They valued the commercial interest of that at $1,000. So that means it has value, and maybe not in the normal thing that I'd go rent, and I get it, this is such a small space, that I don't think people are normally even renting 34 square feet. I mean, that's not a normal transaction, so you're going to pay more for a square foot when you just need a little adjustment than you would in the normal market of going out to buy commercial space. So I don't think that's necessarily a valid...
Stephanie, when we did the, with the Bank of America, the teller that's at City Hall, was that a standalone agreement with Bank of America, or was that part of the sale transaction where the city acquired the building?
It was initially part of the sale of the building to the city, and we agreed, I don't remember all the specifics, but we agreed to keep the ATM there, and then they came back at one point, I don't remember the specifics, but it, I think it was expiring, so then we just decided on whatever the rate was, it was 200, and then there's increases, but I don't think that figure was, we looked at any market rates or anything when that was agreed upon.
And how long ago was that?
The current lease is 20, was 2016 when it was signed. One other distinction that I would like to make with that lease is, that lease is directly with Bank of America and the city, so there's not a third party involved in utilizing public space for a benefit to them as well. So it was a direct lease.
Jenny, can you answer that question that Stephanie just raised? I mean, you know, because if the city were going to go do it, we could actually lease it to Wells Fargo, not attach it, find some way to, you know, I understand all the electronic issues here, but we could enter into, the city could enter into its own lease with Wells Fargo. Here, we're not going down that road because obviously you've got the electronics there with them that is beneficial, and I think that's where Brad was going, how much does that cost you to do? I mean, because all other things being equal, you know, you ought to get reimbursed for your electronic cost, and then maybe the rest of it, since it's all on city property or most of it, except 98%, should be just split equally. I mean, you get repaid, you know, your out-of-pocket costs and whatever the cost there, so what's wrong with that analysis?
I don't know that there's anything wrong with the analysis, I just...
I don't want to negotiate on the record here either, so...
Yeah, I just view it differently.
My own sense is, if we do a motion, we ought to do a motion approving a subject to, you guys come into an agreement that's acceptable to both to the staff and to you and go down the road. We know where the parameters are, it's between 250 and call it 400 or 500, I don't know where the negotiation started, but I think that, you know, that's one way of addressing this. But I think you're seeing what, you know, what we're saying here is that, you know, 250s maybe, with exception of Supers or Barrett, of course, you know, that may be on a low side of stuff, so, you know, if, you know, rather than negotiating in public or to push a number down on people, my sense is, and maybe it's just a coward's way out, to say, you know what, you know, we agree to do this, we want you to come back with a number that we can all agree upon, and if we can't, then it's going to die. I mean, it's about the only thing, because I don't want to put you through it, I don't want to put the staff, primarily the, you know, your private folks, I don't want to put you through it.
Yeah, I can't even tell you that they're going to...
Negotiate from the table when you're looking up here and you're saying, okay, you guys, what are you doing, so, okay.
I cannot tell you that Wells Fargo is even going to agree to this lease. I don't know that they will.
Okay.
Why? Because it's a lease and not an easement, you mean?
Yeah, it's, one is the unilateral escape clause, basically, where the city can, with 90 days' notice, just... 90 days' notice, just end the lease, and here they're, you know, looking at doing the infrastructure or whatever they do, you know, the cost of putting it in amortized over a long period of time, and so I don't know that they'll be in agreement with the terms of the lease, the city lease.
Well, that's fair, I mean, you know, they're not, they're not.
Yeah, I don't know, I, like I say, I have to go back with the entire new lease to them, that incorporates the terms of this lease within it, and let them know that there's no guarantee, even though they have a lease.
Okay, Brad and then John back.
So the resolution, in one place, it just describes a lease agreement, but in three, it does reference the lease. So if we approve the resolution as it's currently written, then that would be approving the $400 amount, and then Jenny, you would have to make a decision, or between you and Wells Fargo, would have to make a decision on whether you wanted to move forward with it or not. So just so we're clear up here, again, I'm not trying to negotiate, I'm just trying to be clear on what happens if we approve the resolution without changing it, right?
That's a fair comment. John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, nobody would accuse you of cowardice. Well, I'm gonna shock everybody, because I never make motions, and I'm gonna make a motion at $325 per month, just to try, because I do like to find compromise, if it doesn't get a second, I'll live with that, but I'm gonna put it out there, I make a motion and we make the lease.
There's a motion on the table to approve the resolution with the change from 400 to 325.
325.
325. Is there a second to that?
The motion should be to change the, to modify the lease, not the resolution.
Yeah. Yes.
What we got, we understand what you're saying. Okay, there's a motion, is there a second? All right, gonna die.
Wait.
Wait.
I'm debating.
Okay.
I'll second it for discussion purposes.
Well, there's a motion and a second, on the motion discussion.
So just to clarify, were, you'd approve the resolution and modify the lease from 400 to 325?
Correct.
Okay.
And I'm trying to head towards your precedent, which I think is a very valid argument, that we have to, you know, go down the road on this with what comes later, I think it's a very valid argument, but at the same time, if you talk about larger tracts, as Lori has, and, you know, we want to get what we can, but, I mean, since it's an ATM, we could say, let's take a ding out of each one, but we can't do that for other kinds of property situations, so.
Okay, there's a motion and there's a discussion, we're under discussion, Supervisor Bunkowski.
Yeah, I've been very interested to hear the discussion going back and forth between all the parties involved, and I've tried to just listen, but I think that the methodology that I would use at the end of the day was what I was trying to go to, which was, what is the lease, what's the lease revenue being generated minus the expenses, which then in my estimation should be then split 50/50, or we went with a number of transactions per month, which I think would probably even be more, just based on the ATM leases that I've done in the past. So, you know, that's kind of the methodology that I'm looking at, because there's an economic benefit to the city and to you, so as long as we account for all the operating expenses, then it seems like the balance should be split 50/50, so that's kind of where I'm heading on this, unfortunately, it seems like we're spending an awful lot of time on a pretty simple issue.
That's, that's true, but the precedent does make it, I would make the point, though, that it is a benefit, because we don't have a bank in the downtown, to every taxpayer, everybody who visits our city, to have that option, they're probably not gonna come in City Hall, or no, it's there.
Okay, other discussion on the motion? Anybody? All right, ready to take a vote? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was nay?
No.
No. Motion fails three to two.
And I'd like now to interrupt, I got knocked out of our electronics and it's now, I have no clue on what issue we're on, I know we're on 20B or 20A, 20B, I guess, but I'm not up with that, so, I can't vote anyway.
It didn't come up anyways.
Well, I know it didn't, nothing came. Yeah, oh, for any of you.
Right.
Well, you still have the blue, and I've lost.
But I think at the end of the day, that motion failed, but we're not done with the agenda item, I mean, you can call it that, so is there another motion?
What's the resolution number?
Yeah, resolution number six, 2019 six.
2019 six?
Yes. I'm sorry, 2019 R six, thank you.
I move to adopt. I move to adopt resolution 2019 R six.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, on the motion, further discussion. Anybody? Solomon time, not Bud time, Solomon time, all right, on the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was, nay, care, let's see, what do we got here? I think it's three to two the other way.
I voted aye this time.
I voted aye.
It's four to one.
Four to one, I vote no.
Okay, all right, motion passes four to one, you got Aubrey or Kathy, you got all that? All right, thanks you guys for putting up, and Jenny, you know, I want to tell you, you know, from our staff perspective, I don't know how this thing fell in the hole for seven months, but I appreciate your call to me, because, you know, we shouldn't be doing that, and I know we've got a lot on our plate up here, you've got a lot on your plate down there, but, you know, as I mentioned, you know, when we got going on this, you know, on these things, we either go up or down early, so nobody gets, has to be strung out, or, you know, we let everybody know where we're going on it, so, but thank you for your call, I don't know where you're gonna go with this, but I just want to say, you know, thanks for putting up with us as best we can, so, and thanks for all the Lopiccolo Family Trust has done in this community here, thank you, okay, all right. All right, let's take up, where am I now, 20, 21 Alpha, this is discussion, oh, wait a minute, yeah, 21 Alpha. This is discussion on possible action regarding resolution, resolution reporting to city engineers' estimated assessment role for fiscal year 2020, identifying the cost be paid by the downtown NID for the purpose of paying the maintenance and downtown streetscape enhancement project, directing the city staff to file a assessment role with the clerk's office, fixing the time and place to hear complaints, protests, and objections regarding the assessment, and directing the city staff to provide notice of the public hearings pursuant to chapter 271 of Nevada rights statutes. Mr. Plemmell, you want to take this?
Sure, good morning, Lee Plemmel, Community Development Director, you've read into the record the purpose of this item, which is basically, this initiates the process for the fiscal year 2020 assessment of the downtown neighborhood improvement district, which was established in 2016 to assist in the cost of sidewalk maintenance in the downtown project area. The projected assessment for FY 2020 is 52,831 divided, as established in the ordinance, among all the property owners, all the properties within the district, and that's based on a 1.9% consumer price index for the year 2018, per the ordinance. Just in anticipation of some questions, just to give you a quick update on where things are for maintenance in this summer and heading into the next fiscal year, the downtown NID board is in the process of meeting with Cassinelli, we had a meeting with the board and Cassinelli and staff yesterday to discuss some things, so they're still working on the contract for this year, and that should be in place by the time we come back with the assessment and have more information about that. And just some points on some comments we've heard, so the contract does cover garbage pickup throughout that, throughout that district, there's still some garbage cans as part of the Curry Street project that need to be placed, so there's gonna be more garbage cans on Curry Street this year, which hopefully addresses a lot of the garbage issues, Cassinelli does on a daily basis, check them all, they don't replace them until they get a certain full level, but they go throughout, check them, pick up garbage along the way, pick up garbage out of the planters, they maintain the landscaping, of course, in those areas, and they'll be taking over all the new landscaping on Curry Street this year. In terms of cleaning the sidewalks, I just wanted to note that at the end of last summer, they purchased a new power washer that's a larger, faster job than the one they were using to start the season, so they're able to get through the downtown, through the whole area quicker, so we anticipate seeing a little bit better cleaning overall this year of the sidewalks, so I think if we, if anybody's had issues with seeing that last year, I think we should see better, see an improvement this year, so we want to see how that goes as we get into the summer here and they start cleaning. And also, we've talked about, both with the downtown businesses and now with the NID board, we'll be working with the NID board and Cassinelli, once the contract's done, to do an outreach, to write up what the responsibilities are of the NID, and what the contract says they're gonna be doing, and what is still the responsibility of business owners in terms of, you know, snow removal for small events and things like that, and garbage and everything, so we're gonna have a little more outreach this year, that's in the works to, once the contract, so people will have a better idea of what's going on, and we'll do that this summer, and then have it on the list before it starts snowing next year to let everybody know what their responsibility is, what they can use on the sidewalk, on the new sidewalks, and what not to use to, on our new sidewalks, so, that's just a little bit of an update. Again, this action's just to initiate the process for us to notify everybody of the assessment for next year, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Board, anybody? Public, you got a question? Shoot.
Lee, so, talk to me about sort of level of effort and sort of making the judgment decision on what's acceptable and what isn't acceptable, and I think you spoke to it a little bit, but, who's making that decision? Do we have input to that? Do we have, I mean, we've heard Supervisor Barrett talk about trash accumulation, I know that I've gotten both phone calls and emails about snow removal in the district, I suspect I'm not the only one, and so I just, I'm, from an educational perspective, I'm kind of wanting to know who makes that determination, and how we decide that there's sufficient level of effort, that there's sufficient money in the budget for Cassinelli to do what they need to do, or whomever the vendor is.
Yeah, you hit on it there, the level of effort is based on the money available for that, so we're limited on, by the ordinance, on how much we can collect from the property owners, there's a fixed amount that the city's putting in, that the city is required to put in, per the agreement, and that's the amount of money they effectively have each year. Now, there are some additional funds that have accrued over prior years, and they have some additional funds, and their effort is to get the best maintenance for their money, and so the NID board has reviewed, you know, they put it out for bid last year and looked at various proposals, and they got the best proposal that they had to try to get the most done. In talking to them, we, you know, we've showed them where they are in terms of having some existing carryover funds, so they know they have some more to work with this year, so we anticipate the level of service increasing, but it is absolutely a function of how much money is being collected.
Well, so it seems in my mind that that's backwards to the way it should be done, I mean, shouldn't we be setting sort of a level of expectation, and then figuring out what that level of expectation is gonna cost, and funding that if we have a level? I mean, because to go to landscape vendor A and say, hey, what will you do for 50 grand? You know, they may say, well, I'll water the plants for you, but I'm not doing anything else. So it seems to me like, and look, I wasn't part of it from the beginning, and so I guess I'm just trying to get educated, and, you know, no dig to the colleagues here who were there, so I'm just, I'm trying to understand that. Yeah, that's where you have been, yeah. Anyway, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, that's, and that was done with the original, to come up with the figure originally, did it end up being the right number, and, you know, it was done with the best efforts and best information at the time to maintain a level of service that was at least maintaining what it was previously for, but factoring in that there would be more sidewalk and more landscaping to be maintained, was the effort to come up with the number that we have today.
So are you saying there's really no way to go back and do a do-over on that? I mean, it is what it is, there's no way to sort of reevaluate that, I guess that's the bottom line as to what I'm getting at.
And it is adopted in an ordinance, how much funding and how much we can charge each year, and I'm sure there are, there's provisions, I'm sure in NRS, to go back and revisit that, and I think this goes to the discussion to, so that, I mean, it would be amending that to put in, certainly to amend how much the property owners are charging would be amending that ordinance, and I'm sure there's a process to do that with notification of all the property owners and going through that, I'm sure there's a process. The other thing that has been discussed is possibly adding city funds to increase the level of maintenance, which would not require an amendment to that, that would just be adding to the contract. And again, I think, you know, knowing this discussion, I think, you know, when we come back in a month with the assessment to have more information, and so we'll have, present you the contract, and so we can have more discussion, maybe with the vendor on what they do.
Okay.
But I, we do, we, you know, I think we've concluded in city staff and talking to Parks and Rec, Public Works, trying to protect the city's investment in the sidewalks, I mean, I think we understand there were some things that had happened over the year that weren't getting cleaned, but at this point, we're satisfied that at least Cassinelli and what their responsibility is, they're the contractor that they're working with now, that what they're doing is in their best effort to improve things over what was done last year, and to do the cleaning, and I think a lot of what we see on a daily basis is not necessarily their responsibility, but I think it goes to it also, I mean, just this awareness in these discussions we have, like after Saturday night, and there's beer bottles everywhere, and just having the contact information, I mean, they're willing to go out and spot clean things and pick up things if they're aware of it, so it's gonna be getting that information out, that if there's a focus of somebody where they need to go do some extra cleaning and pickup, they're gonna go do it, so I think we're moving in the right direction with that.
Okay, and this was by no means a comment to Cassinelli's skill or ability, I just, you know, in general, there were questions that I had asked, and I appreciate the board and you indulging me, thank you.
So, when the NID was originally set up, the levels of service were set, and then estimates for those levels of service were set, added to the amount that the city had traditionally spent for maintenance, and plus reserves, so a certain portion of the assessments go towards reserves, when you hit the 20% reserves, then there's language that would allow for assessments to be reduced thereafter. My preference would be to look at the levels of service and increase the levels of service, and use some of that money that's going into the reserves, which would then make, it'd take a longer period of time to hit that 20% of reserves, but to go back to your question, you know, why was it set up the way it was? Why is there a 5% cap? Why can we not go back and assess the property owners? Because there are certain property owners in the NID that have pretty much a controlling interest, and so it would allow a certain property owner, or maybe two or three property owners, to control the NID, so that's why those caps and restrictions were put on there, to make it more of a democratic process and to benefit all property owners within the NID, including those that are small property owners.
Thank you.
But I would like, you know, say that my preference going forward is that we look at levels of service and use some of the money that's going into reserves to increase that level of service, and if it's appropriate, when we get to that point where the city's contribution should be increased because of their pro-rata share, I'm agreeable to that, but the item that we heard previously, the city was gonna pay 100% of that increase, and there was no increase by the NID or the property owners.
Yeah, and I guess that was my point, and I agree with you, so we can accomplish the same thing without going back and raising the 5% by utilizing the, by delaying the point in time with which that 20% is reached, so, thank you.
Supervisor Barrett, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I've tried to be a thorn in the side on this one, and it's just a long-held conviction that. it's just of, uh, a long-held conviction that, um, when you put a lot of money into something and you don't, uh, and we'll use the word that's in the agreement, maintain it well. Now, my definition of maintain may be a little different than the maintain that's in the ordinance. I think, and just to be less of a thorn in the side, uh, that the last board did a wonderful job of putting this all together. But it has been my observation in watching government my entire adult life, in fact, even before that.
Now you're in it.
Yeah, now I'm in it. So I have to be responsible. Um, but watching it most of that time, I was in it once before somewhere else, um, that government is always a work in progress. Government is always an, an ordinance that can change, a statute that can be changed, et cetera, over time. And I do also understand these things take a lot of time. So everything has to have a champion or a thorn in the side to get those changes made. I believe very firmly that we're headed in the right direction, as, um, our Community Development Director has said. I think that we're gonna get a better contract. I think that eventually the city, uh, should adjust its, um, amount upward, um, because the infrastructure benefits every taxpayer in the community, even though it benefits some who are in the NID more. I think part of the problem is that we have NID property owners who then, in many cases, rent the property, at least the property, out to businesses. The businesses don't actually have the same stake in the situation, but they do have a stake in the downtown. Uh, the problem, one of the problems I see is that Casinelli isn't really charged with going around picking up beer bottles, and maybe we'll get some of that. Um, and I'm sure they're willing to, to do the best they can within the confines of the amount of money that's put out. Um, but the city still doesn't look like a homeless shelter, but sometimes it looks like a homeless shelter, or maybe after Saturday night, is, as Lee put it. Um, so I'm gonna, since we are at the point where we're talking about what we brought from RAC and you guys shot down, which is fine, I understand how this process works. Uh, I'm gonna say I know we're not gonna get any money, though we have a $92 million general fund budget we're about to discuss. Uh, I'd like to see another, we're paying basically half what NID is paying. Uh, I'd like to see another 25,000, as I said, through RAC. Um, but while we get to the point where we have evolved down the road, I'd like to put out a, um, challenge to our public employees, our city employees, who are well-paid in this city. They're better paid in many instances than we up here are, and better paid than I was when I was in the private, private sector. I don't begrudge them that. I think they deserve it, as the mayor is constantly saying they do a good job. But one of the things I want everyone to do, and I'd like department heads and our city manager to go out and inculcate this culture in our community as much as possible, at least in our public employees. If you come down here, or anywhere in the city, and you see a bottle somewhere, pick it up and put it in the garbage. It's not that hard. I don't care if you're a department head or just a, you know, what I was in the news business by choice, a grunt. This community is our community. We put $15 million into this downtown. We're gonna put $20 million into the, uh, South Carson, as somebody pointed out. We probably should put some into potholes, and we will. But this is a great city. We all think it's a great city. I'm making a speech now, I know that. This is what you should do over at the legislature. But when I talked to your city manager about this on Tuesday, I said, she said, I go out and pick it up. I said to her, get everybody that works for us to do that, please. Then we can make this downtown look like it should look all the time, and then we'll come up with some more bucks sooner or later. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Excuse me. Public comment on this issue? All right, well, to entertain a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2019R7.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, we'll wait for the, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried. Okay. Thank you. Thanks for the speech, too. That was a good speech. That was a good speech. Yeah. Okay, let's take up, um, Item 21 Bravo. This is a discussion on possible action regarding a request for a modification of a, to a tentative subdivision map, uh, known as Blackstone Ranch Phase One, unproperly located at south of Robinson Street and north of Salomon Road, north of East Fifth Street. Okay, who's doing his hope?
Thank you, Mayor. This tentative map was approved on March 16, 2017. We're getting the map up for you now. The applicant is seeking to modify Condition 28 to build, yeah, we've got it up now, to build two of the three ditches that are required in the Clomar. To help orient you, what you see, um, on the right side of the screen is the freeway. To the left side of the screen is Salomon Road, and gray is the tentative map. Just to the north of that, the green line, it's, um, the Ash Canyon Channel. To the south of the tentative map is the Kings Canyon Channel, and kind of on the top right corner of the map is the Visi Canyon Channel. The applicant has identified that the Ash Canyon Channel and the Kings Canyon Channel will benefit the project, whereas the Visi Canyon Channel will not. And the applicant has asked to not be required to build the Visi Canyon Channel as part of this project. In concept, the Planning Commission agreed with that. However, the Planning Commission did not agree with the applicant's wording. Specifically, the Planning Commission felt that, um, it should be specific in terms of what the timing of the development of the Visi Channel would be, as well as who would be responsible for that. So what you see is modified wording in the reports of the Planning Commission that the staff had prepared, and the Planning Commission recommended by a vote of five to two, a modification to Condition Number 28 to reflect the wording of the staff. What that will mean is that there's, um, a deed restriction placed on the properties that are to the north of Ash Canyon, indicating that when those properties develop, they would be responsible for the development of the Visi Channel. And it would furthermore add a condition that the project must, this subject project must fund Lomar to FEMA once the channel improvements, the two-channel improvements are completed and accepted by Carson City. The applicant and the property owners of the properties to the north of Ash Canyon have agreed on the proposed wording. Ken Anderson with Odyssey Engineering and Steve Thomas with Rider Homes are both present, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions of the staff? Anybody? Public comments, public questions? Anybody wanna weigh in? Board, we okay for a motion? Motion's in order.
I moved, I moved to approve TSM-17-005-1 based on the ability to make the required findings in the affirmative and subject to the conditions of approval recommended by the Planning Commission, specifically, uh, the modification of Condition of Approval 28 into 28A and B.
One second.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried. Okay, let's, uh, now take up, um, hang on here a minute. Let me get on the right page here. Doing a legislative, we ready for the legislative things? City Manager, we got just one. We're doing, uh, uh, 465, is that what we're doing?
Yes, Mayor. Um, for the record-
Senate Bill 465?
Yes. Adriana Freylake, Deputy City Manager. Senate Bill 465, what this is, is it would authorize a redevelopment agency to adopt a resolution requiring that property taxes attributable to certain tax rates levied for the public schools in the county be allocated to the county school district, such that the redevelopment agency would not receive any portion of the property taxes attributable to such, uh, tax, uh, rates. Um, so this is, um, something that the county commissions and the board of supervisors would, um, they would be, um, allowed to do if they wanted to do it. So it's permissible. Um, and that, um, we just got a, um, the first reprint of that bill, um, and the only thing that changed between the first version and the second version is basically a paragraph that states that, um, oh, hold on a second, I'm getting them confused. Make sure I give you the right one. Okay. So, um, they added a section two, which says that the, uh, aminitory provisions of this act do not apply to the extent that the provisions would constitute an impairment of the rights of holders of bonds or similar obligations. So it wouldn't tie the, the hands if you have bond, uh, bonds outstanding.
Is there a recommendation from the staff?
Um, I can ask the city manager how she feels about that. I mean, I know-
I'm just kinda jabbing a little bit, that's all.
Well, I, I know that the, the difference would mean, I think it's approximately, uh, five, $500,000 in money that redevelopment authority would not have.
You know, I, I think it's, well, we'll wait till time comes. Supervisor Budkowski, go.
So if we were to enter into another recession or depression and the assessed values of the properties in the redevelopment district were to fall below the base, how would this change affect us? Because we're already gonna be losing income. Or would that fall into the language, Adriana, that you just mentioned? Would we be able to invoke that clause to say, we can't meet the additional obligation to the school district based on the fact that we have obligations, we have to meet with the percentage that we receive from this? Because that, that happened 10 years ago, so.
If, anything that falls below the base wouldn't go to redevelopment. So, um, anything up to the base-
No, but it does now. We currently get that revenue. If we lost that revenue, and now we have to meet this obligation that has to go to the school district, what position does that put us in on our bond ratings, on, there's a lot of obligations that we have that go along with the revenue that we're generating. Now, we're gonna lose revenue that we may be dependent upon for whatever obligation we've entered into. And when the assessments drop, we don't have any control over that. So all I wanna, all I wanna make sure is that if this bill passes, what are the long-term implications or unintended consequences to municipalities from that loss of revenue?
Right. So, um, I believe, I mean, as it, specifically to Carson City, our bonds and the redevelopment, I think, will be paid off, and Sherry might remember. I think it's this year or next year? Next year. Um, so, uh, what we're doing with that excess, you know, funds in redevelopment, you know, we're planning for infrastructure and all that. I mean, if this were to pass and the board were to do a resolution and give that, it's the 75 cents of the property tax rate. Currently, this, this school already gets the 43 cents in the redevelopment, um, the amount over the base. Um, then, um, we would lose out on that much money in, you know, over $500,000 in redevelopment to not fund the projects that I think we're, we're wanting to fund in the future.
So you, you're addressing if we have forward planning and everything falls into place, what I'm saying is what are the unintended consequences? We may be paying off bonds in the next couple of years, but what if we enter into new, uh, new bond issuance? What I'm looking for is what are, what is gonna happen to us and our obligations if this passes and then assessments on property within the district drop so that we cannot collect the revenue that we're dependent upon to meet our obligations?
Stuck.
I think it would have to come from the general fund.
You're stuck.
Well-
If we were to issue bonds. I mean, our bonding capacity would be lower if we gave-
But that's the case irrespective of this bill. And that's the case irrespective of this bill. Right? I mean, if we, irrespective of this, if we issue bonds and the revenues fall below the bonds, our ability to make the payments, we're gonna have to tap into the general fund anyway. If-
Except that we've only, already given, we've already-
Well, right, I'm, but it's still our choice to give this to the school district or not. It's still a board's choice.
Not gonna work. I'll go on record to say it won't work that way. So the first thing is, is everybody says, oh, this is permissible and the board won't have to. But you already know the answer is the pressure will be that the school board doesn't have enough money. It's all over the newspaper right now, which means effectively we're gonna lose $500,000. I've done tons and tons of legislation that everybody thinks it's permissible. Okay, it's not. We're gonna be forced into giving the school district the money. What it does is hampers the long-term five-year planning that we've been doing and using those dollars to do our side streets and all of the improvements and projects that we've been trying to accomplish with redevelopment. So the real question for us is, and they're gonna end, tw- I think, 2032, 2034, somewhere in there. So we are not gonna be able to make up that $500,000 loss in any of our long-term plans that we have in redevelopment. So the question is, are we willing to, um, delay the projects that we would have implemented? Because we're not gonna have, that's a lot of money, $500,000 for 10 or 15 more years. So there's a lot of projects we won't do. That's really, in essence, what happens. We have the obligation to pay Carson Mall. So if it drops too low, that's the only time. But we don't have that many that are ongoing obligations. What is it, $160,000 a year? Uh, we have, uh, Campani of a couple hundred thousand. So you could effectively get it to where all we're doing is meeting the obligations and have no project money. That's what you could effectively happen if we were to-
To Brad's point, you could get worse than that. I mean, you could get worse than that. Because the funds could not be there to, to make the payments.
Even the initial obligations. We don't drop that much, but.
Let me ask a question. Where, where's, uh, a Salomon Kramer's bill that also seeks to help out the school district? Where is that? Did that, did that make it pass the first house deadline, or-
Committee.
First committee deadline, rather?
Yes.
I'd, I'd have to, I had to find that.
He sent it in his, yes, he made it through the committee.
The committee, okay.
So it's probably gonna make it through. So that's a, that's an avenue. I mean, takes a vote, but that's an, that's an avenue. The second question, Dan, you, you may not know this off the top of your head, but are, are schools part of redevelopment law right now? Can we spend money? Could the redevelopment authority say, hey, we wanna, we wanna erect a school?
I, I don't know the answer to that, not definitively.
It's not in our plan. And, and the way, the reason, the way this bill came about is because, um, there was a discussion between Clark County and Henderson. Clark County does not give redevelopment money, um, to the schools. Henderson does. So the, I don't understand why they had to, you know, uh, have a bill in order for Clark County to be able to do it. But there must be something that allows Henderson to be able to give the schools redevelopment money, but not Clark. And so now this would make it so that, um, any county could. I don't know if it's their charter, or, must be. I mean, that's the only other thing that would set Henderson apart.
Yeah, you know, I've, I've always been concerned, because I'm an old school board guy. I'm old. Uh, but, you know, I've always been concerned, you know, when we do redevelopment. You know, the, the increment, we're taking the increment away from schools because they, they get what? 75 cents now, is it 40? Can't remember. What, what increment do they get out of the property right now?
Uh, for redevelopment, we don't keep the 43 cents, which is their, uh, the school debt. But we, the, uh, 75 cents does go into redevelopment, which is the school operating.
Right. So when we put a, when we put a redevelopment, uh, system in order, we're, we're effectively foreclosing the ability of the school district to make money on that property, because on, at least on the increment amount, right?
Correct. Right, uh, the school district as well as some other taxing entities.
Well, I mean, you, you're also restricting our, our ability to use it out of the general fund.
That's correct.
So it, it's not, I mean, we're not isolating the school district. Um, the city also doesn't get the benefit of that-
That's correct.
-money in the general fund.
That's correct. It targets it.
So it's sort, I mean, it's equal. In, in that respect, it's equal, in that respect.
And I would, uh, add, Mr. Mayor, you're constantly reminding me, as you just, just a little while ago, now I'm in government, and we have to protect our flanks. This is our job now. You're no longer on the school board, so.
We're all one community, folks. You know, the dollars, the-
I knew he was gonna come back with that.
The, the dollars don't get bigger by separating us up. They don't get bigger by, you know? Anyway, all right. Anybody wanna weigh in on this? All right. All right, I think what we are, we take a motion to oppose.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
All right. That's what I see happening here.
I move to oppose SB 465, as it's currently written.
Good.
I do have an amendment they could do.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Everybody ready to vote? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, carried. Okay, thank you. Good discussion. All right, look at that, it's noon. All right, so we're ready to take a lunch break until 1:30. We'll come back and pick up the finance side and also the redevelopment authority. Okay? We ready to do that? We'll be in recess until 1:30.